To table, that will be found under the SPOLOST portion of the meeting, Item D, which is a resolution requesting approval of the proposal for professional engineering services for the design of Frog Road. That item will be tabled to a future meeting. With that change being made, I'll ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So movement chair.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamey, is there? Second, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Before we move into the meeting, I would like to state that I will be leaving the meeting early today. I have a funeral to attend and we'll try to get through as much of the agenda as possible. Before I do leave, Commissioner Stamey, who is the Vice Chairman of the Board, will pick up the meeting after I leave. With that being said, the first item is a presentation on properties purchased by the Board of Commissioners since 2004. Our presenter is Julie Hoover Ernst, our Communications Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I was asked to prepare a review of the properties that had been purchased since 2004 while also going over what has been accomplished on those properties and the development that has occurred or has not occurred due to the recession. Wanted first of all to start off by explaining that in the mid 2000s, Henry County was one of the fastest growing counties in the nation and we expected our population to double by 2030. Commissioners, at the time, were dealing with that congestion that such rapid growth can entail and they were trying to develop long-term plans to accommodate the estimated future population. These plans for future growth were what led to these purchases, many of which were made during our peak growth years between 2004 and 2008, prior to the recession. And because of the recession, a number of these plans have been put on hold, but as you will see, the county has still accomplished a great deal. Properties can be funded in a number of ways, the majority of which I think you'll see were funded through the SPOLOST programs, SPOLOST II and III. Impact fees are also a funding source. They are charged to new developments and they can be used only for public safety parks and green space and libraries. The general fund budget has funded a few of these land acquisitions and grants and outside agencies have also contributed to our land acquisitions. I'm going to talk about Parks and Recreation first. In 2005, sixty-nine, a little over sixty-nine acres were purchased to add to the J.P. Mosley Park property for $2.1 million using impact fees. The park now totals 169 acres and thanks to the SPOLOST programs, the park now features four baseball fields, four football fields, a recreation center, a large regional playground, two picnic pavilions, and the county's only disc golf course. The Sandy Ridge Park property, we had owned previous to 2005, but we purchased thirty-three additional acres that year for $452,596 using impact fees. And again, thanks to the SPOLOST program, the now seventy-acre park features four baseball fields, a basketball court, two tennis courts, a playground with covered picnic pavilions, and the county's only BMX track, which is used regularly for regional races. Kelly Towne Park property was purchased in 2008, 122 acres total using SPOLOST II funds for a little over $3.2 million. It was to be developed as a passive recreation park and five miles of bike trails have been developed by Sorba and Lead Engineering of McDonough, free of charge. And the plans are currently with the EPD for Environmental Site Compliance Review and after which they are expected to be constructed entirely with volunteer labor using donated or surplus materials that the county already has on hand. The Heritage Park addition occurred in 2004. We purchased 16.65 additional acres for $2.4 million using general fund dollars to construct what is now the Jason T. Harper Event Center and the offices for Parks and Recreation and the county extension. Many programs for Parks and Recreation and the county extension take place at those offices and the event center is the annual site of the Popular Taste of Henry, the Farmer's Market, Parent Expo, among other numerous festivals and events. And Heritage Park now totals 129 acres and features a historic village, the Veterans' Wall of Honor, an historic military museum, four baseball fields, and almost a mile of walking trails. The Nash Farm Battlefield and Park were purchased in 2005. That's a total of 208 acres for a little over $8 million and it was ultimately funded with impact fees, preserving an important Civil War battlefield, protecting vital green space, and creating Henry County's largest park. The property currently features a carriage house and an activity barn, and I checked on this last week and I understand that the carriage house is rented weekly and the activity barn is almost rented as frequently. They have a Civil War museum that sees regular visits from people across the nation and around the world, really, and more than two miles of walking trails. A master plan for this park has been developed that includes an amphitheater, corporate pavilion, and bandstand while preserving the open space for reenactments and other large-scale events such as the flashlight Easter egg hunt that you see in the center picture there that brings out thousands of little ones each year. And unfortunately, because of the economy, this is one of the parks that the build-out for the plans have been put on hold until we have the funds to develop it. The Jonesboro Road Park, the land for that park was purchased in 2008. The county put forward $2.3 million. The City of McDonough paid $1 million and the plan at the time of purchase was to develop a soccer complex that would have created two soccer complexes in the county, but it was discovered that they really preferred to have one mega complex so that parents who had two children in the program would only have to go to one place and wouldn't have to juggle back and forth between two parks. So when that mega complex was built at Mount Carmel Park, the plans for what to do with that land were put on hold until they could really kind of figure out what they wanted to do, but even if they had, if that had been decided, they probably wouldn't have developed anything because there just is no funding to develop those parks at this We also developed quite a few libraries during these years. The Fairview Library and Recreation Center, the land for those facilities were purchased in 2004 at a cost of $175,000. That's forty acres for 175,000. The library was completed in 2007 using SPOLOST funds at a cost of $2.8 million and the Recreation Center was completed in 2010 for $3.2 million. And that 26,000 square foot facility features two basketball gymnasiums, an indoor walking track, an exercise and workout area, aerobics and dance rooms, music's room, arts and crafts, and a community meeting room that is used frequently for community reading, meetings up there. The library plan, I want you to notice, we recycled that plan quite a few times in Henry County, which saved taxpayers money and enabled the SPOLOST dollars to be stretched further because we reused those plans rather than hiring an architect to develop new plans each time. The Fortson Library, you'll see that plan was used there again. 2.3 acres of land were purchased for the Fortson Library for $250,000 using SPOLOST III funds. And the 15,900 square foot facility was constructed and it features many of the same amenities that all the others have. Separate children and adult book and reading areas, meeting room, twenty-four public access computers, young adult computers, six children's early literacy stations, and separate reading room off of the main library. The total was $2.3 million to construct that library. You'll see that that was actually a little bit less than the Fairview Library because we were starting to see some of the prices come down because of the economy. We were able to get better deals on construction and that was paid for entirely out of SPOLOST III funds. As for other capital projects, in 2000, well, let's back up a little bit. By law, county government administration must be, must function out of the county seat and large parcels of vacant land are really few and far between in McDonough today. So back in 2007, the county purchased 146 acres adjacent the administration building here and the jail complex. And that property has a golf course on it. The Cotton Fields Golf Course is located on that property. We purchased it for $22.2 million back in 2007. And that land was purchased for future expansion needs in case we ever need to expand the jail or expand the county administration functions here and it was a great location with its easy access to I-75. It has been subsequently subdivided in 2009 and the SPOLOST paid the $10 million for the 66 acres that the county now owns. The balance is owned by the Development Authority and you can see on the map how the property adjoins the administration building and jail property, making it ideal for any future expansion needs. The Public Safety Training Facility, back in 2008, we purchased the property down on Stroud Road in South Henry County for a little over $4 million using SPOLOST II funds to develop a public safety training facility. The isolated property is an ideal location for such training because it's away from people and other development, which really is a safety hazard. And the first phase, which was a firing range, was completed earlier this year and opened to the public for their use of the firing range just last month. The total cost of the firing range was $105,370 and just over $37,000 came from the general fund. The balance of that came from the Sheriff's Office and Police Cease Asset and Forfeiture Funds, so very little has come out of the general fund for that. Prior to that completion of that firing range, our officers were having to go down to Gipstick or other facilities outside the county for their annual firearm qualifications and that was taking them out of the, out of their area for quite some time, which really wasn't efficient, it was expensive and not good for our officers to have to travel that distance. The Public Safety Training Center will ultimately be shared by the Henry County Police and Sheriff's Office as well as the Fire Department. And the master plan includes training classrooms, a K-9 Training Center with demonstration facility, a shoot, move, and communicate training facility, operations force, and mock village, as well as facilities suitable for Fire Department needs. Progress has been delayed due to the economy, like so many of our other projects. The Henry County Government Annex used impact fees to purchase the 67,000 square foot aging and largely vacant strip mall for $4 million. It included seven and a half acres of land and a completed parking lot. With that head start, we were able to use the Spalding County Correctional Institute and the inmates there to convert it into a much-needed government office space for between $21 and $33 per square foot, depending on the previous condition of the space. And the facility currently houses headquarters for the police and fire departments as well as code enforcement, the SPOLOST department, and a community meeting room. The property at 38 Cleveland Street in Locust Grove, we used SPOLOST funds to purchase what was the first Locust Grove Elementary School to preserve the history of that building in 2009. We paid $552,000 for that property. And the plans at the time were to open a tax and tag office in the facility to make it more convenient for Locust Grove residents to renew their tags or to pay their property taxes and these plans have been put on hold due to the economy. But since we acquired that property for about $135,000 less than what it had been appraised for, and so to make that deal work, we allowed the owner at the time to be, to stay in that property rent-free for eighteen months. After that time, if we still did not need the property, we said that we would charge $2,500 in lease per month and that's what we are doing now. We are, he is still operating in that facility and because we are, we cannot convert it at this time due to the economy to the tax and tag office that we had originally purchased it for, he remains there and is paying a $2,500 per month lease. The Judicial Center Parking Deck, using SPOLOST II dollars in 2007, between 2006 and 2007, we purchased four separate lots to combine into one parcel to, for a total of $1.4 million that we used to construct the Judicial Center Parking Deck and an additional overflow parking lot. The Parking Deck was completed in 2010 for $3.5 million using SPOLOST III funds and it was constructed at two levels with 306 spaces, but the Commissioners and SPOLOST did a great job of planning for the future because it really was designed to have a third level in the future that would add 139 additional parking spaces. The Atlanta South Regional Airport was acquired in 2011. At that time, it was called Tariff Field. The county paid just $2.7 million toward the purchase price of $17.7 million and that purchase includes 543 acres of land. That includes the airport, taxiways, and all contiguous properties previously known as Tariff Field, plus a hangar and 217 acres of adjacent land that had been owned by the Clayton County Water and Sewerage Authority. Combined, all those properties had been appraised for over $22 million, but again, the only out-of-pocket for Henry County was $2.7 million. Henry County plans to expand the runway and install an instrument landing system and other improvements and once those are complete, there's an enormous opportunity for direct economic growth within the aerospace industry as well as the corporations that need convenient airport access for their operations. Increased traffic at the airport will also benefit the county through increased ad valorem taxes and fuel taxes. We purchased a property in 2010, a two-and-a-half acre parcel for police use for $381,150. That was paid for out of the general fund budget and we had been leasing a property for that same use for $4,000, so this will ultimately, over time, save the county money by owning it rather than continuing to lease property for this purpose. The Emergency Operations Center, for which the ribbon cutting is scheduled this week, we purchased an existing 22,500 square foot structure and five acres of land out of foreclosure in 2009 for just $1.15 million, paid for entirely with E-911 special funds, which are collected from the surcharge on our phone bills. The total budget for the facility, renovating that facility, was $4.83 million, including the renovation, fixtures, furnishings, and equipment. $300,000 of that was funded by SPOLOST, but the balance, again, was E-911 special funds. The facility adjoins the old E-911 Center, which was why that was such an ideal purchase, enabling the massive communications infrastructure for E-911 to remain in place and that alone saved the county about $1 million because we would have had to move that infrastructure had we located farther away. The Henry County Transit Facility, to provide even greater value to citizens, the Emergency Operations Center site that I just mentioned was subdivided and on 1.6 acres of that parcel, Henry County Transit is now constructing a 5,000 square foot office space. And the new location on Industrial Parkway will provide transit operations with easier ingress and egress to accommodate the approximately 100,000 trips the buses make each year for its passengers. And the $1.2 million facility is being funded entirely by the Federal Transit Administration Section 5307 Urbanized Funds. The Locust Grove Event Center was purchased from the City of Locust Grove in 2009. It includes nine and a half acres of land and all the furnishings and we purchased it for $2.3 million through the SPOLOST III program. The facility doubles as a senior center for South Henry County and the 15,000 square foot building includes a banquet room, a catering kitchen with serving line for the senior center, and flexible activity rooms for the senior center programs. And then the 530 West Highway 2081 is a bank property that we purchased to redesign the Henry Parkway Connector McDonough Parkway Extension so that McDonough Parkway can extend all the way down to 155. I don't know if you can see from the diagram there, but the roadway really cuts up right against that building. And in order to realign the intersection, they were going to have to take a good portion of the parking lot and bank drive-through that really would have made it unusable as a bank. The right-of-way estimates, including the consequential damages for having to take so much property and change the use of it exceeded $645,000, but because it had been sitting vacant since 2008, Henry County was able to purchase the entire property for a little over $550,000 using capital projects funds of the general fund budget. So you can see, the county can either use it for its own purposes or sell it back as the, or sell it as the market rebounds, but either way, they, they saved money by going ahead and purchasing the bank as opposed to paying the right-of-way and consequential The Flippin' Fire Station, Henry County purchased .91 acres adjacent the current Flippin' Fire Station in order to construct a new station on essentially the same site. The land was purchased in 2008 for $116,122 using SPOLOST II funds and plans to construct the station have been put on hold due to the economy. We also had two properties donated to us that we used to construct fire stations in different locations in the county. The Board of Education donated property for the Timber Ridge Fire Station Number 13 and Salem Baptist Church donated property for the Salem Fire Station on 155. All in all, more than $60 million of property have been purchased since 2004 to construct public safety facilities, libraries, recreation centers, parks, and other public facilities to improve the welfare of the community and promote economic development. But what I really want you to pay attention to is the fact that just 10% of that, or approximately $6 million, was paid for out of the general fund budget. The rest was paid for out of impact fees or the SPOLOST programs and as you saw, the E-911 special funds and other grants and donations. So you've really done a lot with the little as far as it hitting the, the general fund budget. This time, I'll take any questions, or I'll try to answer any questions if you have them.
Mr. Holder.
Julie, there was one project that, that I saw that was not listed and that was Locust Grove Rec Center. It was not part of it and I know that it was purchased within that 2004 window. The other one was the Locust Grove Library. It may have been constructed, it was dedicated in, in 2005, so there's another library and another rec center that I know that, that's not pictured here today that was part and would add to these numbers and both of those were, were funded through SPOLOST, so.
You are correct. The, the library was not listed because the property itself was actually purchased prior to 2004 and that's what started that, but the, and the Locust Grove Recreation Center was really, probably just an oversight on my part, so I apologize for that.
And let's go one step further. The property for the Locust Grove Library was not purchased. It was part of a land swap, so therefore, there, there was no, no purchase of that land, but I just wanted to bring that to the table.
Julie, that was a great presentation. I know that, you know, oftentimes as Commissioners, we get questions, well, why is the county going forward and doing these projects in a recession? Why are you building rec centers and libraries when we're in a recession? And, I mean, the numbers speak for themselves. $60 million, not counting the two projects that Commissioner Holder referenced, and paid for with SPOLOST or impact fees or grant fees or special fees that can only be used for the purposes for which they were collected. And we're certainly thankful for the SPOLOST program, not only from the building aspect of it, but also from the transportation aspect of it because we've been able to get ahead of some of our traffic congestion thanks to the SPOLOST program. And it has really made life a lot simpler for our citizens to get back and forth to work with some of the, the major improvements that we've made to our transportation systems. But this was a great, a great presentation and certainly reminded me of even some projects that I had forgotten had gotten done under the impact fee program or the SPOLOST program, but I appreciate you bringing those and putting together this presentation today.
Thank you.
Does any other board member have a question or comment on this?
Okay.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation of our target industry study. Our presenter is Bob White, Executive Director of the Development Authority, and Matt Tester of Market Street Services. Good morning.
Good morning. Give us just a second to get our presentation up and going.
And Madam Chair and members of the board, thank you for giving us an opportunity to present to you the findings of our target industry study. We know that you have a full slate and the chairman has to leave a little early, so we're going to try to be as compact as we can and that's why you do have the materials in front of you there that are actually the documentation, the reports that were issued throughout this process. I have with me Matt Tester from Market Street Services, who will be actually presenting the, the bulk of the presentation to you this morning. And time permitting, we'll take a few of your questions. But the target industry study that we had done for us in 2011 into 2012 was not our first target industry study. We actually had our first attempt at a comprehensive economic development strategy back in 2002, the Henry Tomorrow Initiative. Some of you were around and participated in that activity and that was literally a public-private initiative. We brought together the Development Authority, the Chamber, the Council for Quality Growth, the, the School Board, hospital, and, and other public and private sector stakeholders with that to help develop a strategy for economic development, our first strategy for economic development for Henry County. From that process, we had five major goal areas that were established. Infrastructure and quality development, economic structure, which is really a core, a lot of the core economic development components, education and workforce, civic capacity and collaboration and quality of life. You'll see those themes throughout the target industry study that we just completed because they were deemed to be still very, very valuable. And as a part of that comprehensive strategy, we had our first targeted industry study that was completed for us and that study identified both existing targets and emerging targets for us in that particular area, in the areas of logistics, headquarters, sales, and back office operations, paper and allied products, data processing, customer service centers, and information and technology services. We used that study as the basis for our marketing and targeting efforts over the next series of years. And through that time, we had changes. We had changes in the leadership in the county, we had changes in the economy, we had changes in the actual structure of industries that were represented in Henry County. And as we were using those targeted industries, they began to be morphed into other industry sectors that we were looking at and they were informally added in as part of our marketing operations, but then we wanted to formalize that process a little further. So a number of you were involved in our first Economic Development Summit back in April 2008 and our goal that came out of that was the development and implementation of a new comprehensive economic development strategy that was modeled somewhat after the collaborative relationships that we had in the One Henry Conference of Land Use Plan and the Transportation Plan. That led to our first intergovernmental retreat. The focus of that first retreat was economic development. Again, we focused on those five major goal areas that were established in Henry Tomorrow and then we identified additional development opportunities in there and work teams who would then meet during the coming year to be able to put together that study and that recommendation. That was part of the One Henry Economic Development Strategy process that a number of you were involved in. During 2009, we had over 100 stakeholders literally representing a cross-section of leadership in Henry County with that area. One of the elements from that study was the recognition that we needed to update the formal study that we had done in 2002 with our targeted industries. And that led us, then the Development Authority, to begin a process in 2011. Ken Huff, who was then our Vice Chairman of the Development Authority, Charles Smith, who is in the audience today, as one of our Development Authority Board Members, and I served as a task force to look at the target industry process to develop a request for proposals, which we then submitted to four of the major economic development consulting firms in the United States. We got back two proposals from those companies. The team then selected, as our recommendation, Market Street Services, who had actually done our first targeted industry study as part of the Henry Tomorrow Initiative in 2002. We contracted with them and the funding for the targeted industry study was paid for completely by the Development Authority from our funds. And we selected them in September and began the process going forward. So I'll ask Matt to come forward. Matt Tester from Market Street Services served as our primary project manager and he's going to take you through the process. he's going to take you through the process very, very quickly. Some of you were involved in that. Former Commissioner Alata and Chairman Mathis were representatives of the Board of Commissioners on our work group or steering committee. And Brian Preston was then the Chairman of the School Board and was a member of the work group from that standpoint. And several of you attended some of the work group meetings as well. So, Matt?
Thank you, Bob. And thank you all for having us here today, and especially want to thank again those of you who did serve on the work group with us and helped walk through the process that led to the ultimate recommendations. I do want to briefly, just for those of you who aren't familiar with Market Street, quickly just give you a little bit of background. We were founded in 1997 by a man named Mac Holliday, who's been in the business of community and economic development for about 35 years and has worked across the country as a Chamber Executive and a state-level economic development director. And so he founded the firm as an alternative to the traditional, only marketing and outbound-based economic development, recognizing that it's a holistic process, everyone has to be involved. It involves community development as much as economic development. So with that basis, we've proceeded to work all across the country. We've now worked in more than 140 communities in 32 different states, and we are fortunate to have recently been engaged in several projects throughout the metro Atlanta area, specifically working in Gwinnett and Cobb and back in Henry County now, Forsyth, Carroll, and Clayton. We're currently working with the Atlanta Regional Commission on a regional economic development plan, and we've also worked in the city of Alpharetta. We bring, because of that diverse experience, we do try to bring bits and pieces of all of that knowledge to bear in each new project as we begin it. And in this case, we had the benefit of having worked in Henry County back in the 2000s, or back in the early 2000s on the Henry Tomorrow process. And as Bob mentioned, the point, the primary point of this plan was to take a fresh look at the targets that had been established during that time, recognizing the changes that occurred in the economy, changes that occurred in leadership structure here in Henry County, and just asking those questions again with the additional element of making sure that what's included in this is an actionable strategic component and some ways to measure implementation to ensure that you're actually moving forward. And so this is that list of previous targets that we began with. And what we mean when we talk about targeting in economic development is really how to focus the resources that you have in a community on the economic activity that is most likely to create new jobs, to retain the jobs that you do have, to bring about innovation, to raise incomes, to really improve quality of life and quality of experience for everyone that lives here. And so to do that, we employ a variety of research methods of input with stakeholders, and so we did that in this process as well. I'll speak more specifically to that in just a moment, but it includes quantitative and qualitative components. And so we, as usual, have brought that to bear on this process. We reached out to as many members of the community as we could that made sense within the scope of this process, and we also conducted a very substantial research component to go along with it. Within the realm of targets, there are different ways of defining them, and some of them serve different purposes and are conceived in different ways. These are some of the categories that we regularly lose when you use when you start thinking about targets. In this case, we, the concepts of leading targets, emerging targets, and supporting targets became particularly important. Leading targets being those ones that are currently growing, and they're robust, as evidenced by the research, and they have high potential for future growth and wealth creation. Emerging targets may not have the same level of growth, but they hold great potential to diversify the economy. They do indicate growth in recent periods, and they can fuel innovation in key sectors. Supporting targets are those that are integral to having a successful community, those things that residents desire. Often retail is one of those, and they need to have a strong local presence despite the fact that they're not always associated with the highest wages in the economic spectrum. So to this process specifically, it was really a three-phase process with a 3A and 3B component, where we began with a competitive profile of Henry County, looking at what the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, challenges are facing the county right now, starting at a higher level. And then as we identified those, going into the next level of research in the technical memo, we zoomed in and we dug a little deeper into the economic structure of Henry County, the occupational dynamics, what are the skills that the residents that are here have that they could bring to bear on new job growth. And then we moved into the next phase after identifying what those targets ought to be for Henry County. The draft target business analysis brought in the strategic component, making some recommendations within each of those targets to help move them forward, to grow them. We presented a draft to the work group and then came back with the final recommendations and had that approved by the work group as we moved forward. You also see it in Phase Two, is where we engaged stakeholders in a series of interviews and focus groups. We also dispensed a survey that garnered about 175 responses, I think 174, which is very good because we were after a somewhat targeted audience with that. And so we did use a work group. We brought in 20-plus people to oversee and guide the planning effort. They were critical to reviewing all the deliverables throughout the process, to giving us ideas, to making sure that what we had recommended was within the realistic environment here in Henry County. And so we relied heavily on them to keep us in check, but also to give us some of the best ideas that we produced throughout the process. Again, we did engage stakeholders throughout the process, primarily right in the Phase Two component. In the Phase One is that competitive profile, the way that we conceive of that kind of research, and please do refer to the document in front of you for some of the key findings. I'm going to move past that to get to some of the more meat of the target business analysis. We use the concepts of people prosperity in place to think about the well-being of a given community, and so we deployed that here as well and came away with some very helpful understandings that led into the technical memo of what's going on here in Henry County. So again, the point was to refresh that target roster, to figure out where you, in terms of target development, new business development, pursuing new jobs, where to put that money, the resources of the county, how the Development Authority can really be strategic and focused. So to do that, we provided some components that helped lay it out for the work group and for ourselves as we walked through it. We defined the targets, we talked about national trends within each one of them. We did an occupational analysis to determine what the skills are of the population here in Henry County and the surrounding area. Business sector analysis, figure out what's growing, how's it growing in relation to national trends, state trends, so you can really figure out what speaks to strategic local advantage here. And then we did differentiate them along the leading, emerging, and support lines. And so after taking that original set of targets and passing it through that wringer of research, we came up, this is a graphic that just shows you the end product of a lot of research. And what we found is that what we conceived of as leading targets here in Henry County, which are those that are really producing most of the job growth, really have, bring high wages to bear, and really have strong growth prospects going forward, do include logistics, which I know is something that most people here are familiar with, varying opinions as to the value of it in the economy. We can assure you that there is very strong prospects for high-wage growth within that sector and that in Henry County, it's undeniably an advantage. And so we've shown that there are a couple niches here to be developed within that. Also, healthcare services in Henry County, it's growing nationwide, but it's growing faster here. And that speaks very well to opportunities for retaining residents that are here and bringing their talents to bear within the county, and also capturing what is going to continue to be a growth sector across the country here in Henry County. The prospects are very good for healthcare services. Professional solutions, we've broken into a few different niches to help think about what we really mean here. This is one of those targets that when we talked to people, they really wanted to see grow and flourish here in Henry County. Where are the white-collar jobs? Where is the office development? How are we going to bring those here to Henry County rather than shipping off our residents into other metro Atlanta areas? And what we found is that there is a very strong core of talent here in Henry County, which speaks very well to opportunities. Some of the fastest-growing business sectors in Henry County fall within this, including customer care services, some business services, professional and technical services-type jobs, information technology, which is somewhat, in this case, an aspirational target in that we're really talking about data centers, we're talking about tech-heavy, technology-enabled type jobs, and we know that there are some investments on the table that would really facilitate that kind of growth here in Henry County. Yes, sir?
What is customer care?
Customer care includes things like inbound call centers, back office processing of data, and things like that. Advanced manufacturing also showed great promise as an emerging target here in Henry County, particularly growth in plastics and chemicals, which is over a $700 billion industry here in the United States alone. And those two components serve as inputs into all manner of manufactured goods in an increasing amount, and so it's a very valuable commodity, and advanced processes are being applied to those materials and technologies in the manufacturing sector. And so it provides prospects for high-wage growth there as well. Medical manufacturing has done quite well in Henry County. And transportation and aviation references the fact that you're in the middle of a transportation hub here in Atlanta, and with the recent acquisition of Atlanta South Airport, there's also opportunity to develop a very specific local supply chain network for these kinds of parts and goods instead of the prospects for developing manufacturers that can create networks within metro Atlanta are doing well.
How legal are you for biotechnology and financial?
Yeah, it's very difficult. One surprising thing that came out of the study was that the financial and insurance sectors actually did better in Henry County than they did across the country and especially in the state of Georgia. And so the reality is, you are competing for some of that.
Why couldn't we leverage that in order to try to attract those type of companies to Henry County?
Why can't you?
Yeah.
You absolutely can't. I mean, some of it comes down to marketing, some of it comes down to the realities of the development environment, which had been so badly struck by the recession. So any prospect of office development in recent years has just been squashed by the fact that we've got, you know, a 12-year supply of office across metro Atlanta. And so there is some development in niche markets and, you know, sub-markets within metro Atlanta, don't get me wrong, but the reality is you can compete for that.
Well, the great thing about having this targeted study completed is it gives us the information that we need as we put together a comprehensive marketing package. And I know Julie has been very much a part of all of this as it's gone through the process, and she'll be key in helping us to develop our marketing package to move forward and to be more competitive and hopefully attract more of these industries to the community. We have some of the structure in place, it's just a matter of how do you get the word out there and let people know what you have to offer?
That's right, and the point is well-made. A portion, and we are going to speak to this, one part of this process was to evaluate the marketing, the economic development marketing efforts here in the county, particularly for the HCDAs. So we hired one of the best in the country as a subcontractor to do that evaluation. So we have a very complete marketing recommendations piece that came out of this process as well. And so I couldn't agree more that part of it is just perception and marketing. There are also supporting targets here in Henry County. I mentioned the role that they play in an economy. They're not necessarily where you're going to pour all of your money, but they're necessary to be vibrant for people to want to stay here and be here. And retail and travel and tourism have definitely shown promise here in Henry County and are positioned to do well going forward, especially with the distinct opportunity attached to the new airport acquisition, interesting some of the things that might come out of So moving into the next phase, we had sign-off from the work group on the recommendations presented in the technical memo, and then we moved into the stage of figuring out how do we move some of these forward? Who are some of our partners? How can we track progress? And so that's what the target business analysis ultimately produced. And so we provided target briefs that really summarized, and these might be very helpful for you as you think through how to use these, the opportunities, the challenges, the justifications, the opportunities and challenges within each of these targets. And it's really a good elevator speech almost as to why each one of these targets makes sense for your community. And then we, the marketing assessment was attached at the target business analysis level, and then we moved into an action agenda and a prioritization exercise with the work group. After we presented the recommended actions, we said, A, do these make sense? B, of the ones that do, let's prioritize them so we know which ones need early action, which ones would really help generate some of the momentum that would sustain growth going forward. And so there's certainly not time for me to walk through even, you know, a small portion of the recommendations, but you'll see in the structure of the document, the final target business analysis, there's a top-level action, and then within most of those, there's some very specific sub-actions that help fill in what we're talking about there. So some of these may appear vague as we walk through them, but there are details associated with each of them to help explain them. But marketing was a pretty critical piece, and so I'm just going to spend a minute on this. Overhauling the website is a pretty critical investment to economic development marketing. Today's websites have to be both informative and clutter-free and utilize the best technologies because when site selectors and prospective businesses and even residents are looking at where they want to go, they want to be able to get the information quickly, they want to be able to understand what they're looking at, and they want it to look as though it's a community that has their act together. And so within a very small budget, the HCDAs have done a great job of putting all the content out there, and we actually commend them in the marketing assessment, but we also recognize that it does need overhaul. There need to be pages associated with each of these targets. So if somebody says, I want to, I'm relocating my manufacturing firm, why would I go to Henry County? And they click on it, and there's information there. And so that, those are some of the subcomponents of that. Also, realigning a focus on really identifying those geographies with a high concentration of these target industries to get marketing missions out to them, to be talking to firms, to be talking to people that are involved in making decisions there and telling them about Henry County. Prioritizing those marketing missions over executive conferences or major industry conferences, which have just proven to have a lower yield than very targeted, focused trips do. Also, just going to speak a little bit to overall target development environment, there undoubtedly, the scale of the work that's being done in economic development here is impressive, given the limited resources that communities have to apply. And so we applaud the work that you all are doing here to make sure that economic development remains vibrant. But we recognize as well, given the scope of the challenge ahead, that there is a need for additional funding, particularly when it comes to marketing, as it would free up remaining staff to attend to many of the other duties associated with calling on businesses, on making sure that marketing materials are updated, making sure that the businesses that are here are being tended to as well. And so that's one of the primary things that would help, recognizing that the environment is constrained. There are many recommendations within this that don't cost much money, they just, they cost staff time. They rely on cross-department partnerships and collaboration. And so we certainly want you to be able to comb through the document and understand that, you know, we're not just recommending a wholesale increase in spending as the only way forward. It's critical that entrepreneurs and small businesses continue to be developed and supported here in Henry County, particularly as the county diversifies, making sure that minority, small business owners are recognized, that they're supported, and that they're provided the tools they need to thrive. You see in a place like Gwinnett County, which leads the entire metro area in minority business growth, that it's become a critical pillar of their economic development programming, and it's really reaping benefits in that once the word gets out, more businesses move in because they see that the environment is supportive. So we recommend, yes, sir?
Is Gwinnett doing anything specific that promotes minority businesses?
Yes, sir. Their partnership, Gwinnett Economic Development Partnership, is very specifically reaching out to the minority and international chambers there in the county. They're hosting joint global business luncheons to make sure that everybody that wants a seat at the table, that wants to know what the toolkit is that they can tap into, that they've been reached. And so that's one of their core focuses right now.
Is that a target for our Development Authority, Bob?
I recognize that I'm taking longer than anticipated, so I'm going to keep moving, but we'll be happy to field any questions. Healthcare, as I mentioned, is growing very strongly. Recognizing that there is a distinct advantage, competitive advantage here in Henry County, our recommendation is that there be the development of a medical district in Henry County, really recognizing that the hospital here, especially with its new opportunity and its association with Piedmont and the outlying areas where there are many doctor's offices and healthcare services offices, that that be recognized as a distinct district such that it can market itself that way, that when new businesses start, they know that they want to come here, that there's an advantage to being here, that the population is being served here. And so going through the process of figuring out what kind of district could we make, and we've made a couple recommendations, here that would actually... and we've made a couple of recommendations here, that would actually congregate all of those businesses in an area, and not necessarily one area, but a series of areas that really support that and identify it as an advantage. Within logistics, one of the most promising avenues for growth these days is the EB5 program that's really shown promise in Georgia as well. And so maximizing foreign investment opportunities through foreign trade zones and Henry-serving EB5 regional centers is an important step forward. Also making sure that the web tool that we are talking about is really optimized to visualize the favorable site selection factor. So when somebody says, "I want to know what kind of infrastructure serves sites here in Henry County," they can click on a website and they can see it. I'm going to keep moving. Professional solutions, we know that there is some prospective new investment in IT infrastructure here in Henry County. We recommend that the HCDAs lead the charge in, for development of that. Recognizing that key sectors can be built on the strength of next-level telecommunications infrastructure and capacity, that new businesses and innovation are born out of doing new things with the web and with technology tools that have never been done before. And also making sure is critical within this, that small businesses are very well-supported and recognized as critical to moving forward out of this recession. As is true across the country, it will be small businesses that lead us out of the recession, that fuel all job growth going forward. Now to advanced manufacturing, making sure that Southern Crescent Technical College is connected to manufacturers to help them serve their needs, establishing a registered apprentice program to make sure that the word gets out, demand is increased, that advanced manufacturing is growing, that it provides high wages and a high quality of We also recommend within advanced manufacturing and logistics on the one hand and healthcare on the other hand, that part of moving this forward is bringing together sector-specific councils, where economic developers, the business owners, the executives, the workforce are all plugged in to a council where they can understand what their joint needs are so they can collaboratively find ways to maximize growth within that sector. And it's a, it's a model that is working across the country. It's proven very useful even within the metro area, and that begins to speak to implementation. And so as I mentioned before, many of the recommendations can be accomplished without funding. But the reality is, in the teeth of the recession, the competitive landscape has become more difficult and it has become more competitive, to be redundant. And it calls for strategic investment in the right things to position yourself well for growth and to compete. So partnerships are a part of that. Investment when it's available is certainly a part of that. And so we certainly recommend enhancing capacity. Forming a public-private partnership, which is the model for economic development in the 21st century, in this case to conduct economic development marketing for Henry County. Refocusing some of the HCDAs' money specifically on getting that website optimized and state-of-the-art, and also pursuing additional revenue as possible. And as we know that implementation was a critical piece of this process, I wanted to just show you, I'm not going to walk through any of these at this point, we also provided in this process specific benchmarks to look at. As you proceed, are you hitting your marks? Some of these are obviously going to change with time, some of these may be too ambitious, some not ambitious enough, but the point is that there are specific goals that you can check off. You can say, "We're achieving" or "we're not," and we can make adjustments along the way as we go. And so there are performance and activity measures overall and within each target sector provided here. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Bob. Thank you for your time. I apologize for going long.
Thank you, Matt. And obviously, we're covering a lot of ground. Your reference materials there will fill in a lot of gaps for you, but one of the things that Matt has mentioned several times is a number of these initiatives can be done with human capital. We can just devote more human resources to dealing with issues. Some are going to deal with budget issues, and we're very sensitive to today's budget climate in the county, certainly in our organization as well. So we're focusing on those first quick hits that we can do, the improvements of the website that can be done internally, the collaboration with the marketing, with the county communications department on developing a new family of collateral materials that we'll be able to utilize, utilizing our social media outlets. All those are things that we can do very, very quickly. Some things are going to require realignment of assets and resources and bringing in additional things. And this is something that we're going to be needing to talk with in the coming months with you. Matt mentioned a public-private partnership. That has been a successful model in a number of areas, including Gwinnett County, for furthering their economic development programs. One of the things that we asked for that Matt had mentioned outside of what a normal target industry assessment is, was to look at our marketing, look at our staffing, look at our budget levels, and make recommendations on what we're doing that we need to improve on, new areas that we need to do, and then again, areas that require new capital funding for us to be able to look at. So we're going to be working with you on that. We do believe that the public-private partnership is witnessed by the One Henry process and the E-Squared initiative is the way to go, and it gives us a lot more resources. But for a community our size, they recommended a dedicated targeting of a marketing budget of at least $150,000 a year just for marketing, not considering your labor costs or anything else in there. So we have to identify a new source of revenue. What we've done thus far, the target industry study was completed in March with that process. We've been assessing the study and looking at those areas that we can immediately start moving on. As you know, we hosted in April a new developer day, added Atlanta Motor Speedway in conjunction with the Metro Atlanta Chamber of Commerce, and we targeted the statewide project managers in economic development, as well as the leading commercial brokers in the Atlanta market. We're already working on the website improvements. We'll be rolling those out over the next several months, again, working very heavily with the county staff. There are some elements that were recommended that cannot be done within our current structure, so we need to look at those and allocating those resources, financial resources, to be able to address some of those areas. We are working on conceptual drawings right now on our proposed synergy center, which is, would be a business incubator coworking space in conjunction with the Board of Commissioners, working on the budget proposed for that. We are already underway with discussions with the Georgia Department of Economic Development, with the Metro Atlanta Chamber, and with the Joint Development Authority of Metro Atlanta to focus on leveraging our joint marketing opportunities, do the things that Matt alluded to, trade shows, marketing missions, and cooperative advertising opportunities. And we've initiated discussions with the Advanced Technology Development Center, ATDC in Atlanta, to try to leverage and encourage technology startups in Henry County. That's a very, very quick snapshot, recognizing your time constraints and the rest of the elements on your program today. If you have to answer any questions, we're going to need to involve you and continue this process forward. The work group that served as the steering committee for this process needs to be maintained, and we need to pull that group back together again this fall and really address these action items. And I do want to point out that we did use Henry tomorrow, and that served as a basis for our economic development programs throughout much of the last decade. But what we didn't have as much in there were those specific items that we had, specific responsibilities, who was going to address those, and how are you going to measure, what are the metrics that you're going to use for that? So we were sure that we wanted to add that into this piece to make sure that we have those elements for accountability and to know that we're doing the right thing and can make mid-course corrections as need be. So we'll be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have a question, Mr. Preston?
Matt, I was able to be part of some of this, as Bob mentioned, and one of the things, I've had a chance to kind of go through this as y'all were going through it, and a lot of good information, but a lot of it's pretty high-level stuff, 30,000-foot looking down. So we're effective. Board of Commissioners can do everything we can to help you guys. I'd ask a favor, if y'all could do an executive summary or something of three to five major things that the Board of Commissioners can implement over the coming years that maybe are impeding economic development, or things that we could look at. So it gives us, because when I go to conferences, when I do other things, when we have consultants like yourself, you give us these big books, and unless you break it down to three to five really tangible things we can do, because we're not going to create websites, we're not going to do the marketing, that's going to be for the Development Authority and others, but we could do something if you tell us, is it infrastructure? I mean, I saw the reference to fiber optics or other things like that, and we can work with the private sector on making that. Give us three to five major obstacles that are currently impacting Henry County so we can get to work and try to make it effective for you guys so it just doesn't turn out to be another consulting gig that we, because we're not experts, we need you to dial this thing down, and we want to make sure before you go on to your next job that we actually know what our walking orders are to make sure we implement.
Yeah, that's something Bob and I will definitely work through to make sure we've got something concise for the, specifically for the Board of Commissioners.
I mean, and think big, I mean, because we, economic development's going to be something tremendous. I mean, the example I've used when we went to the Intergovernmental was Columbus. I grew up with my family, part of my family being from Columbus, wasn't the greatest community back then. We went and visited in the last year, and they've done some incredible things. And I, you know, and that's what I want to know, they obviously, how do you eat an elephant, you know, one bite at a time? I need to know exactly what we can do to implement, and I'm scared this is too high level, you know, that we don't actually have action steps for us specifically, you know, and that's what I want to make sure we get out in the executive summary.
Sure.
Any questions or comments? All right, great presentation, a lot of great information, and I'm sure that we'll be digesting this for several days to come. And so as Brian said, if you could provide that information, that would be very helpful to us.
Sure. In the meantime, I do want to help direct your focus so that you don't feel like you're swimming through the sea. There are some more concise components within that final target business analysis, just to look at those tables that are the justifications, opportunities, and challenges. That's going to tell you what you need to know about each target, and then just go straight to the recommended action steps within each target. We, I certainly hear you, Commissioner Preston, and we won't leave it at that, but just so you don't feel like you have to comb through every page, that would be a good start.
I went back to that section right before the opinions, I'm sorry, Bruce, but I would ask you, because there's got to be a priority list on that, too, you know, because we broke it down by sector, you know, manufacturing, healthcare, logistics. I'd like, if y'all are looking at it, what's the three to five in a priority out of that list? Because we can't obviously implement everything, but if we have a priority that was, that lists the obstacles, that's what we need.
And we did that within each section, and then we did the overall section, which is the things that kind of create that whole environment, but we'll make sure that it's as clear as possible.
Let's pull it back together some executive.
I'll be honest, the list that you went over, it seems like those are things that we're already doing. What I want to know is how can we be aggressive? How can we compete with Gwinnett County and North Fulton County, Cobb County? What do we do to attract those businesses here to Henry County?
If I may, one of the things that they do better than almost anybody else is internal marketing. They're on the same page in Gwinnett County.
What about aggressive incentives?
I'm sorry?
Are the, what about aggressive incentives?
They certainly are, but not necessarily any more so than other counties within the region. They really brought their talent to bear, meaning their collective talent from various parts of the county. On economic development, they started it with that partnership Gwinnett process, which compared to this process is more comprehensive in scope. It really is about every aspect of community development and economic development, and they brought them together, and they essentially formed an organization out of them to do economic development. We're, within the scope of this process, we are focused on economic development. The step forward here in Henry County in that regard does begin with marketing, and I do not believe that that is, and as a firm, and I worked with our CEO, Matt Holliday, as we went through some of these issues, certainly believes that the first step forward is getting everybody on the same page here in Henry County. And so it begins internally, and then it's projected externally through the investments in things like websites and making those targeted marketing missions. And so if there were one thing I would say, it would be that.
It's interesting because in my conversations with Chairman Nash of Gwinnett County, one of the things that she mentioned to me is that she's not a big proponent for incentives. And they've certainly been very successful at what they do, and occasionally they do send email invitations to accompany them on trips to other states to look at developments that are a good fit for the metro area. So it may be that we need to take advantage of the invitations to travel with them to some of these places and bring that information back.
Yeah, very good.
One of the key things in looking at any areas, you're looking at whether it be Gwinnett, whether it be North Fulton, whether it be Cobb, that they're working with all of those, is you have to look at the resources that you have. You look at the assets that you've got in the community. I happened to work in Gwinnett County in the mid-'80s before the massive growth curve, and a lot of things that they had in place there were starting to work. Technology Park Atlanta was birthed there with, from graduates from Georgia Tech, and they had companies like Hayes Microcomputer, arguably one of the most successful early technology companies that came out of Georgia in the Advanced Technology Development Center. Having that product, having Class A office environments, they're light-years ahead. If you look at the north side, at those office parks and business parks, most of these operations, whether it be manufacturing, distribution, or office headquarters, don't build a building. They go into an existing building. So having that grouping of the resources, having the things that Matt alluded to that are on, Commissioner Preston, to your point, some of the things that y'all can do, targeting data centers. I know as we were at a data center conference last week and looking at the growth of that particular industry. Douglas County has been very successful because of technology infrastructure they had. In a business park that was on the Cobb-Douglas County line, but they have gotten billion-dollar, with a B, development with major data centers for people like Google, Yahoo, that are physically located there. Don't have a lot of jobs associated with it, they're well-paying jobs, but they have an enormous investment potential. There are several things that you need in that, and one of those things is redundant fiber, which has been a huge shortcoming that we have here, and that's one of the areas that we're looking at addressing with the proposed fiber plan in there. The acquisition of the airport has been, the airport's been very important for some projects that have located, but obviously the growth of aviation and aerospace is tremendous. We have an asset here that is only about 10 to 12 air miles from the busiest airport in the world, and when you look at the adjoining land that we have and the ability to be able to develop that, that is huge in our ability to do these things. So we've got a number of those things, and Commissioner, to your point, we'll make sure that those are fleshed out in the executive summary, but a lot of these key elements are underway, and the hospital merging with Piedmont, some of the projects are going up in the 5th District as relates to healthcare, have some tremendous opportunities for that. So we'll be looking at those areas. Commissioner Preston from the school board knows that quality of education and education workforce is absolutely critical to our ability to be able to attract the jobs in the future. Getting the technical college satellite is enormous in terms of providing the skillsets for a lot of the advanced manufacturing and the other technical areas there. So we've got a number of things that have really occurred in the last couple of years with a focus that will help us long-term, but we'll make sure that we point those out in the executive summary. But you'll have a seat at the table, I'll share you on that.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, moving on in the agenda, we have a resolution supporting a request to GDOT for approval of a traffic signal in conjunction with Economic Development Project Gemini. You have before you a resolution, and basically Project Gemini is something the Development Authority has been working on for quite some time now, and it represents an investment of more than $78 million in Henry County and would employ some 250 associates. As part of the conversation with this particular company, with this particular project, there is a request for a traffic signal to enhance safety at that location. GDOT is funding the project, but Henry County will help facilitate that, and so this is simply a resolution in support of the Georgia Department of Transportation for approval of that traffic signal in conjunction with that project. So Bob, is there anything that you wanted to add to that?
No, we referenced this as Project Gemini, and it is a major project that we have been working with quite some time. We are very close, this is one of the last steps in the process. We hope to be able to have an announcement with the company in the very, very near future for you, but this is, this is a critical step, that traffic signal at that location is absolutely critical to our location decision. So again, as the chairman mentioned, it's being funded through DOT funds and the private developer in terms of the costs associated with that, but they do need an indication of support. This is something that the Board of Commissioners do support for that traffic signal.
And my conversation with GDOT on this is that in order to expedite and get this project accomplished, what they will most likely do is provide the money to Henry County and allow Henry County to oversee the project, because it cuts down on, for lack of a better word, red tape associated sometimes with projects that go through the GDOT process. And so we've been in conversations about that. And if there's no further questions, you have before you a resolution, I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Motion by Mr. Bowman, is there a second? Second by Mr. Preston, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
I apologize, I need to leave to head to the Georgia Economic Development Association.
Okay, thank you, Bob. The next item on the agenda is under public safety. We have a resolution requesting the approval of the lease renewal for the Ellenwood Fairview Police Department precinct. Our presenter is Chief Keith Nichols of the Police Department, and that is exhibit Precinct. Our presenter is Chief Keith Nichols of the Police Department, and that is exhibit number one. Good morning.
Good morning. How y'all doing? Several weeks ago, Major Jason Bolton came in front of y'all in regard to this same proposal, and I think there were several questions that needed answering, and I guess I'm the one to answer those questions this morning. But to start off from the beginning, when Commissioner Holmes was elected in 2010, one of the things that he did is he came to me as, at that time, I believe I was deputy chief, but he came to me and asked me what I thought to be some of the most severe problems up in Fairview. And we had a rather lengthy discussion, but what came out of that meeting was, at that particular time, we're having a lot of armed robberies of businesses up in the Fairview Road, Panola Road, and East Atlanta Road. That's where the majority of concentration of businesses were. And I discussed that with him, and he asked me what I thought of having a precinct in that particular area. And I said, well, that would be one way to address that. And we've done several other things, such as details in that area, to address that particular problem. But in 2010, like I said, we addressed that problem and spoke about it in 2011. Then County Manager Bush Sanders came to me, and he said if I'd accompany him to the location where the old public shopping center was, and we went through several businesses that were vacant right in there, and we identified one to open up the precinct. I believe we actually signed the documents for that in May, and we kind of got up and running around June of last year, and it's taken quite some time. This morning, I have with me Lieutenant Matthew Marlowe, because one of the things that we looked at focusing at doing is putting our detectives up in that particular precinct and letting them operate out of that precinct. Now, I'm going to let him describe here in a minute what they do and all the little details that it takes, because it's quite extensive getting up and running up there. But I will note that I've gone to two Fairview nights out and spoke to many citizens up in the Fairview area, and that's one of the things that I seem to hear over and over and over again, is that how glad that they are that we're in that particular district. Now, what we do, yes, sir?
According to note that when I got elected, you guys were in the process of moving out of the old fire station because of issues of mold and some other issues, correct?
Yes, sir. What had happened was the previous commissioner in that area had started the process of us actually moving down to the old recreation building, which was further east out Fairview Road. Good point. Thank you. But we did move to that particular location. What we do is we staff that precinct with a watch officer, what we call a watch officer. And he works, I believe, from 10 to 6:00 at night, accommodating walk-ins, citizens that come in. And I do have a little, I don't know if y'all can see that, but that's what that watch officer, he's, we've had an average of 52 walk-ins per month. We've had 204 incident reports that he's generated and one accident report. What that allows a citizen to do is come in and rather than have to us call a zone officer off the road and go to that individual, or for them to drive down to Stockbridge, that helps us. I know that there were some statistics thrown out about, are robberies down? Is this down? And in some particular instances, crime is down and some of them are up. And those are things that we have to constantly work on. I think armed robberies were down slightly, and one of the issues that I think when Major Bolton was over here, we were taking the entire District Five area statistics. And what we've done with these particular statistics that I'm quoting now, is we took Zone 11 and 12. And the way our zones are figures, it doesn't encompass any one particular area such as Fairview, but 11 and 12 encapsulates the best that we can tell with the Fairview area. So that's kind of a little bit difficult to do to say that. But one of the things I have heard over and over again is from many of the businesses up there and many of the citizens, is they're glad that we're in that particular area. I'm going to go ahead and give this portion over to Lieutenant Marlowe, and he can explain a little bit more of what it's taken to get this precinct up and running in terms of technical capabilities.
Can I have one more question, Keith?
Yes, sir.
Chief, total calls for service, over the past year, there's been a decrease of 2,100 calls compared to what it was the year before. Do you think that's due to the increased visibility in the area?
Anything's possible, sir. Yes, there has been, according to the stats, and I'll go ahead and throw these up, there's been, the total incidents were down 12%, I'm sorry, 1%. Total calls for service were down 12%. But we've seen a lot of things go down in this economic downturn. I can go ahead and throw these up there.
Okay.
But the total calls for service are down.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. As he stated, I'm Lieutenant Marlowe. I'm with the Criminal Investigations Division. Currently, I work out of North Precinct. As part of that responsibility, I have a crew of detectives that work out of the Fairview precinct. I have one sergeant, three detectives, and one crime scene technician that work out of the precinct. Part of the purpose of me being here is to explain to you some of the equipment that we currently utilize in the precinct, the benefits of having our detectives in the area, and to explain, give a little reasoning as why there was a delay in me getting my crew into that precinct. Currently, when we moved into the precinct, when I was told to move my guys in, we didn't have any light switches. There was some issues with the heat. We had to get those issues resolved. There were no hookups for internet or telephone, which are critical to my guys to be able to do their job, do it effectively. If they're going to be in the area working for the people or the citizens of that area, then they need to be able to do a good job at it. So we worked hard. We got it in. It was hardwired. The IT department with the county came in and they set up a wireless system that connects directly with Boca, which is essential to our operations, again, when we're doing our paperwork, evidence, and that sort of thing. At this point, the equipment that's in place allows hard-line access for the county telephones and the internet. Almost everything inside the building at this point is portable. That's the way we set it up. There's a rack of equipment that is in place right now, that if we did have to move, we set it up so that we could remove it from the building. The one thing we would lose and the money's lost would be in the wiring and the structure that were put in place to put in eight separate ports for our detectives to work in. I'm going to move on to some of the benefits we've experienced by having our detectives in. Right now, we have, as I stated, a sergeant, three detectives, and a crime scene tech that work there. They work four days a week, 10 hours a day. They work from 2:00 PM until midnight. They're our evening crew of detectives. What that gives us as investigations, we don't respond to every single call, but what we do respond to are the critical incidents. If there is an armed robbery, a shooting, a stabbing, that's what we respond to. By us being in the area, if there is a critical incident, we're able to send someone to the scene immediately, which prevents us from losing evidence. And in addition, it assists in identifying suspects in a case. If you have a critical case, if you have someone shot or hurt, having someone there immediately to help identify the suspect and apprehend them, you know, helps provide a little more safety to the community and the quick apprehension. The centralized location in Fairview provides us with a quick response to almost anywhere in the Fairview area. It's centralized at this point where you can go south out of that area down East Atlanta. You can go north up towards Fools Mobile Home Park or east or west from that location. And again, it's going to just hit on another point that the chief made. We're in that area every day, 10 hours a day. We have a lot of contact with the community, with the businesses, just as part of us doing our job, because not only do we respond to the calls, but we also work hard to build relationships within the community so that we can prevent crime, because it's more important that we prevent crime than responding to it. And that's probably one of the biggest areas where we've seen a benefit, is we've made friends in that area we can go to if something happens, and they have someone specifically that they can talk to at any point if they need help.
That's a very important point, because several new small businesses have opened up in Fairview over the past year, and a number of them said it was due to having that police presence in that area. So that was a great point. Thank you so much.
And I'm going to move finally into the delay. There was a delay from the point that the lease was signed to me having my crew of detectives in. One of the issues came from the fact that we were trying to open up the Stockbridge precinct as well. Whenever he spoke of moving our detectives out of the Fairview Fire Station, they all moved into the Stockbridge precinct. So we had the issue of having two precincts we were trying to open at the same time and trying to prioritize the assets and get everything in place. And finally, the biggest delay in it was getting the IT department in and getting the structure hardwired for all the communications equipment, everything else that's necessary for us to do our job.
I hope that answers some of the questions that were asked at the last meeting. And I also, you know, the monthly rent is $1,050 a month plus, and then we have to come up with the utilities, which are running somewhere around $200 to $300 a month. So that's for a cost of $12,600 a year. And I think the, some other folks looked into the lease, and I think that's probably rock bottom price for that area and that size building.
Mr. Preston?
Question I had, Chief, was I know renting space for a business here in town is that one of the reasons when I've thought about moving, ended up not moving, because I realized there's going to be a big pain in the rear end to move everything, and also the cost of relocating with all my IT gear and everything else. I know we have a lot of internal resources that do that stuff, so it might not economically, but cost of productivity, I mean, I'm just looking at the number of 12,600, which as a total, 12,000 is a lot of money, but on a monthly basis, $1,000 a month. What is lost if we have to move you guys? Is it more than 12,000 bucks worth of productivity and cost?
I'm not sure how I'd measure that, but my answer to you is probably. It takes quite a bit of time to relocate everything, get reestablished, and that was one of the difficulties that we had. We were in the Fairview Fire Station up there, and it took quite a bit to get that up and running again. And again, the lieutenant makes a very good point. With us being in the business district, we can make contacts with the different citizens. And I know that one day, I just happened to be up there riding around, and I heard a call go out through the Dollar General up there, where there was a drunken, disorderly individual in the business. And I happened to get there first, and immediately following me was our watch officer, who was directly across the street, and he was able to show up. So it's things like this that we're able to establish those types of relationships with these business owners, that sometimes they're reluctant to call us, sometimes they use all kinds of excuses, like, you know, "Well, I didn't want to bother y'all." Well, that's what we're here for. But once we establish that and interact between them, they feel more freely to call us and discuss some of the problems that they're having. So I don't know if I can actually, dollar-wise, answer that question, but I do know that it takes quite a bit financially and just getting established when you have to move from one location to another.
Protect the people in the northern part of the county. $12,000 annually. Are there other substations in Henry County?
Yes, sir. We have one down at Tanger Mall, and we've had that for, I know it's probably going on 15 years, however long Tanger Mall has been there. Our K-9 unit operates out of there, and then obviously, we have a precinct in Stockbridge and then our main headquarters in McDonough here.
Is there any other questions, Mr. Bowman?
One. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Matt Marlowe, sir.
Yes, sir. How long have we had more than one or two people in this precinct at Fairview?
We've been operating fully out of there since December.
Since December?
Yes, sir.
Now, when the calls, when a lot of the calls are answered, what percentage of those calls would you say were answered out of the Stockbridge precinct?
I don't think I understand your question. Are you speaking specifically for the Criminal Investigations Division?
Yes, sir, for...
I don't have a percentage.
You don't have a percentage on that. So we had a spot at the fire station, which is reasonably close to the same spot, and we weren't paying anything for it. And of course, we went to this 12,500, and I think the chief said it, the utilities are three or four?
They fluctuated from 200 to 300 dollars a month. I think that's...
So 300?
Gas and electricity.
Okay, so that's another $3,600. So basically, it's $16,000 is what we're looking at. We're looking at the lease right now, but total operation around $16,000 for that station. I mean, for that particular precinct, when we had one basically free, I understand that the view is not the same, because the precinct's not in the quote-unquote "strip center," so people don't see it as readily as they would see it in the fire station itself. I understand that, but response times, I think, would be very similar from the fire station standpoint to the precinct there, the one at the public shopping center. Okay, well, that's just a question that I had. All of our, we haven't really had all of our, let me rephrase that. How long have we had everything set up, IT, Boca, everything?
That would have been December. That's the reason I couldn't move my people in. As part of the detective's job, everything they do has to be documented, and it has to be entered on the computer. And the only way that they can print is to hit Boca, is to hit the mainframe. And so initially, when we tried to send them up, when we got some limited internet access, they were printing the Stockbridge. And driving back and forth to Stockbridge every time you print, which is, every case you work was, logistically, and it, as far as math power, it didn't make sense. So we pulled back out again and waited until we had the infrastructure in place to do the job that it warranted.
Okay. We had cars in front. We had the main police station, we had police, Fairview Police Precinct in front, so people knew that there was a presence in the Fairview community, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Chief, back to the original question that Commissioner Holmes had earlier concerning the mold issue. Has the mold issue in the old facility been addressed? Because I see Fire Chief here, and they're operating in the same building but on the other side, correct?
Well, yes, sir. And that's a long history up there, and I can remember when we operated out of there, the old narcotics building. We worked narcotics out of there. And then that building has transitioned several times. I believe one time, it was used as storage for the radio system that we currently use, and I believe the fire department's now using it for storage. So I don't know if they have any people in the offices, or they're just using it for different items to store. But it, you know, it was a smaller area, and we made the best of the facility that we could when we did go up there and operate out of it.
Okay. Any more questions from any Board members?
There's some people in the audience that want to speak on behalf of the precinct.
Go ahead, Mr. Holm.
Chief, first of all, as far as the Tanger Satellite precinct, how much rent does Henry County pay to Tanger?
I don't think we pay any rent, sir. I believe we actually get a check, I believe somewhere around the vicinity of $500 donation from Tanger, plus they donate that facility for us to be there.
And I think that's correct, too. What type of operation do you have out of that facility at this time?
Out of Tanger?
Yeah.
Mainly our K-9 officers operate out of there, because a lot of the time, they're down in the south end of the county, operating out of the south end. So they use that facility to walk their dogs and take care of their dogs and write their reports and stuff like that. They're just a physical presence down there.
And it's welcome. There's no question about it.
Of course. Yes, sir. We get a lot of accolades from the folks down there at Tanger because of that.
Let me say this, and this is just a comment that I'd like to make about the precinct being in Fairview. We are one year into a, to a change of direction. We've seen, according to the calls, that we're down 2,100 calls or whatever it was. I don't have the number. We've made an investment, as the lieutenant indicated and the chief, as far as getting set up into this location. We're talking about a cost of $12,000, a tot- of, of lease, of, of 12,600, and a total cost of $16,000 there and about. All of those additional costs can't be defrayed if you were at whatever the location. Doesn't matter because you're gonna have the heat, you're gonna have the light, you're gonna have to have phone services and various things wherever you're gonna be located. Makes no difference. I think that we might be, and this is my opinion and I'm gonna share it. We would be wise to continue in the location that we are because as we have seen and been told by various police officers that crime statistics are headed down. We are talking about a one-year lease. At the end of this second year, if you, you know, if things turn around and, and, and crime goes up and it's not effective as a location, then I think we need to be looking at a different perspective or a different direction. So, that's just my opinion. I, I, I think that it's hot with 12 months, of which the chief has said it took quite a bit of that 12 months to get a startup period before, before they could actually be in operation. I think it's, uh, I thought, I don't think we're giving it a fair chance at this point with less than a year of a track record.
Yes, sir. And one, one of the-
Question, Chief.
I was gonna say, one of the other things we're trying to do is we're trying to track our actual issues up there more. And when we, we have our watch officer up there, we're gonna get more feedback out of him on what type of issues we have coming in. And that's one of the difficulties that we've had in the past because of the way our zones are set up. We can punch it, punch a button and pull our statistics up, but per zone, and that's the way we operate is per zone. But we're looking at the particular issues that Fairview is having. And we're gonna try to be more specific in addressing them in the future.
Any other questions from any board members? Uh, Madam Attorney, someone did sign up for public comment, but this is not a public hearing. Do we hear her now? Does she, did she come to the end?
Ms. President?
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Ma'am, we have an opportunity to speak at the end, but at this time, I'm gonna yield the floor to you right quick unless you make a comment. Your name is Ms. Cheryl Killian. If you'll come to the podium and state your name and address, please, for the record.
I'm Cheryl Killian. I live at 130 Rowan Road. I am the property owner. And I want to thank Bruce Holmes for bringing this precinct to our area. I want to thank him for bringing a sense of community to this area. This area is a thriving area. It is a, a great opportunity for growth. And with this police precinct here, we have more businesses willing to look at our area and build in our area. And we do need community services. We need grocery stores, we need drug stores, we need, um, car detailing centers. We need lots of businesses, including the healthcare center that is planning to come there. And this precinct helps build all of that. And I am so glad that that, the police presence has increased. As far as moving back down to the old police station or the rec center, this is far away from the town, our community center. You know, we're not, we're not a town, we're not a city. We're a community and we are striving to become, um, more, um, a more healthy community with less crime and more involvement as the, um, Public Service, um, Fair that is put on last year at the Public Shopping Center and this year at Home Depot. So, I would really appreciate it if y'all would vote to keep, to renew the lease and keep the precinct open, up in that area. Thank you.
Any other comments from any board members? At this time, you have a resolution before you to approve the lease for the Fairview Police Precinct. I entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Preston, all in favor? All opposed? Let the record reflect that the Mr. Holder, Preston and Holmes in favor and Mr. Bowman in opposition. Next on the public safety, there's a resolution to accept a grant from the Firefighters Burn Foundation. Mr. Joe Kelly, our Chief Kelly will be our presenter.
Good morning, Commissioners. Here this morning, I asked for a section of, um, a Brett Chesney Fallen Firefighter Memorial Grant that we applied for. This grant is gonna be used to help with our juvenile fire center program that we currently have in, in fire prevention. The grant is for $1,574.69. This is a hundred percent grant. I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions from any board members? At this time, you have a resolution before you to accept the grant. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Next item under Human Resources is a resolution to approve the Henry County ACCG Group Health Benefits Program. Mr. Terry Earhart will be the presenter. Go ahead, Terry.
Good morning, members of the board. Um, I come to, to you today with a resolution to approve the group adoption agreement for the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia.
Any questions from any board members?
Yes, sir.
Just 'cause I saw that we actually get added benefits from this without cost, correct?
No, there's no cost for this agreement.
No cost, thank you. At this time, I, I entertain a motion. Move to, motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Moving right along, under Extension Services, we have a resolution requesting a contract memorabilia to understanding with the Board of Regents regarding the county extension. Mr. Frank Hancock, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, this, uh, a resolution to renew the memo of understanding with the University of Georgia. I think you have all that in, in your packet there. It outlines the responsibilities of the University of Georgia and the Board of Regents and, and Henry County. This is a longstanding agreement with cooperative extension. It goes back about 80 years and so we're requesting that you give the Commissioner the authority, I mean, the Chairman the authority to, uh, sign that contract.
Any questions from any board members? At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, third second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Under Department of Transportation, a resolution requesting award of bid to purchase plant mix asphalt. Mr. Terry McNichol will be the presenter. Good morning, Terry.
Good morning, Board. We do have a request to award our contract for our annual plant mix asphalt. Of course, George, our Department of Transportation requires asphalt for our various county projects, resurfacing and et cetera. Having this contract allows quick access to the product and guarantees prices. We'll remain firm for the contract period. Uh, we, the purchasing departments and outsee our bids, we had two responses. And we would like to award or separate the contract as follows for the asphalt. We recommend award to E.R. Snell Stockbridge Plant for the 25-millimeter only, which is one of the asphals that we use. The second award would go to C.W. Matthews and we recommend award and, to the Stockbridge Griffin and Forest Park Plants on the 4.75-millimeter, the 9.5-millimeter, and the group on that is 65-1, and the 12.5-millimeter, the 19-millimeter and the 9.5, that's 65-2. Those are the different mixes. I could tell you about them, but, uh, so we did award a, a split or recommend award of that. The reason we went to awarding at three plants might require a little explanation there. Probably 90% of the time, 95% of the time, we'll be going out of the Stockbridge Plant and that's our usual mode of operation. However, in looking at our potential resurfacing list next year, there is one case on Southampton Road where the Griffin Plant is actually closer to, or it's about the same distance, I'm sorry, it's about the same distance from there to Griffin Plant as it is to, uh, the one in Stockbridge, but the Griffin Plant was cheaper. And not just that alone would save us about $3,800. In addition, there's usually about a two-week period when C.W. Matthews will shut down their Stockbridge Plant to do overhauling, um, just refurbishing the plant. And at that time, we normally, uh, go to the Forest Park Plant, which is generally closer. We try to plan our work so that the work in the northern part or closest to that plant is done when they shut down their plant, so it's not, um, an excessive trip for us. So, under those circumstances, it's why for C.W. Matthews on all the remaining mixes that we recommend award to the Stockbridge Griffin and Forest Park Plants. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from any board members? Mr. Holder?
Terry, how does the price of this asphalt, this bid compare to last year's? Is it up, down, whatever?
It's, at an average, I would say about $2 to $3 a ton less. So, it did go down. Some cases, maybe even three, depends on the plant. You know, like Griffin, it was just, it was very interesting to me to note the different costs from the different plants. Were not the same. So, we looked hard at that very issue. You know, do we need to go, for instance, they had a Lithonia Plant. In some locations of the county, we looked at our resurfacing list. Do we need to go to the Lithonia Plant and then you gotta weigh in the trucking cost and, and things like that? But generally speaking, it was $2 to $3 a ton savings, I'd say.
Good.
Any other questions? At this time, you have a resolution before you to approve the plant asphalt mix for Henry County Department of Transportation. Is there a motion? Yeah. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Moving right along, under Splat, a resolution requesting authorization for asphalt for the new fire station. Number, number six in your book, exhibit number six in your books, excuse me.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. The new fire station nine in Stockbridge is a designated and approved Splat III project that's currently under construction. The Henry County DOT is in the process of constructing the A-cell, D-cell lane and the access road at the new fire station. And it'll require to purchase a plant mix asphalt that was not included in the original contract for the station. The plant mix asphalt will be procured through the Board of Commissioner-approved annual contract vendor at the time of purchase. The request is to purchase all required asphalt to complete the project in a total amount not to exceed $35,000. Funding is available in the Splat III Fire Station number nine project account. Any questions?
Any questions from any board members? At this time, I entertain a motion. I think, Mr. Bowman, this is in your district.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion we approve.
Motion for approval, Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries forward zero. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Next on there is a resolution requesting the designation of Frog Road and Lester Mill Road as a Splat III transportation improvement project and approving the related budget amendments. Mr. Rocky Romero will be our presenter. Good morning, Rocky.
Good morning, Commissioners. Derro Paving is a designated Splat III transportation improvement project and it has been identified to widen and pave Frog Road from the end of payment to Lester Mill Road and also to widen and pave Lester Mill Road from Locust Grove Griffin Road to Bill Garner Parkway. The Splat Department recommends the approval of designation of Frog and Lester Mill as a Splat III transportation improvement Derro Paving Projects. In order to do this, we also will request a budget amendment in the amount of $2 million in the need for Frog Road and a million, 203,524.21 for Lester Mill Road to cover design, rightaway, construction and related costs. Funding for this budget amendment is available in the Splat III Bill Garner Parkway account. I'll take any questions the board may have.
Any questions from any board members?
I'd like to make some comments about this one and some, uh, ask Mr. Romero some questions, too. First of all, this is, these two projects, even though they're being designated this morning as Splat III projects, they were on District One's Tier Three, a Tier Two project list. Not designated, but were, were identified as, as Splat projects. That's, that's so that we, and it was done initially, back when, when Splat III came into being. So, it's, Splat is, is very specific on what can and can't be done with Splat funds. But these projects were identified, they just had not been designated. And I wanted to make that clear to people that think that I'm not just pulling out two projects out of the air and putting them on the list because that in fact is not what's happened. And certainly, people seem to check the records quite closely these days and, and you're certainly welcome to go back and see that, uh, that is a Tier Two project for District One, both of those roads.
Right. Good point, Mr. Holder. Any, any questions from any board members? There is a resolution to approve this project. Is there a motion? Motion, motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries forward zero. Thank you, Rocky. I think we have the next one, too.
Yes, sir.
Uh, a resolution requesting approval of the budget amendment transferring funds from Bill Garner Parkway, Keys Ferry Road at State Route 81 for resurfacing.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, resurfacing, resurfacing is a designated also Splat III transportation project. A budget amendment in the amount of $1,501,000 is needed for the resurfacing of Cohen Drive from Old Jackson Road to Iris Lake and Old Jackson Road from Bucks County Line to Pixville Road to cover construction and related costs. Funding for this budget amendment is available in the Splat III project accounts of Bill Garner Parkway for an amount of $786,826 and also in Keys Ferry Road at State Route 81 in the amount of $264,174. Just wanna make a comment that the money coming from the Keys Ferry is from District One only.
Thank you for your clarification.
Because I, that project was split in two, two districts.
I have a question, uh, real quick. The Bill Garner Parkway funds, is there, was there, is that Splat II or Splat III?
That is Splat III and, uh, with this, uh, with, this will, between this resolution and the previous one, uh, well, not the previous one, but the next ones that are coming, Bill Garner Parkway will be depleted, the, the funds.
Because we did have some in there, in two, correct?
Uh, no. I'd like to elaborate on that.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
No, the first district, I mean, the first, uh, Bill Garner project was in Splat One.
Correct.
Not in two. Now, Splat III had $4 million from District One to widen Bill Garner Parkway. District Two put $2 million in, so that was $6 million. At the time, there was an 80/20 split between state projects and, and, and the county. The county would put in 20%, the state would put in 80%. Well, those things, those days are gone since the implementation of Splat III. So, that would've been $6 million. And the projected cost to widen Bill Garner was about $20 million. That's right. So, 20, yeah. Okay. The state comes back and says, "No, you can't widen Bill Garner Parkway. It has to be full lane." Well, during the meantime, with various Commissioners from District Two, tho- those funds have gone away. So, $4 million was all that was left. And that was the $4 million that was committed from District One initially. $4 million won't, won't even start Bill Garner Parkway. And Bill Garner Parkway is a designated project on the regional transportation Splat that's gonna be voted on in July. So, these funds, since it could not be, Bill Garner Parkway couldn't be completed- So, these funds, since it could not be, Bill Gardner Parkway couldn't be completed and couldn't even actually get off the ground with the four million dollars that District One had committed, then obviously, my opinion was that it should be used on projects that could be completed, and if you look, and if any of you know where Lester Mill Road and Frog Road is, it's about as close to Bill Gardner Parkway as you can get. So, it's, the money actually stayed in the area where it was first designated to go. However, it just was not on Bill Gardner Parkway. That answer?
Absolutely, thank you, sir. Any questions, any board members? At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder to approve, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Rocky. The next one is a resolution requesting approval for the proposal professional engineering service for the design of Lester Mill Road. Rocky, you have this one, too. Go ahead. Not E, D, D's been tabled. Oh, I'm sorry. We're on E.
You're on Lester Mill.
Correct, go ahead.
A request for proposal for professional engineering services was solicited for the design of Lester Mill Road from Locust Grove-Grevenon Road to Bill Gardner Parkway. Lester Mill is approximately three and a half miles in length. Four requests of proposals for professional engineering services were received and reviewed. Staff recommends the approval of an agreement of professional engineering services from AECOM, Inc., in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, two hundred dollars for the design of Lester Mill. Funding for professional engineering services is available in the project budget. In addition to that, Henry County DOT will be performing all the surveying, and they'll be preparing the roadway plans with a, with a cost savings of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred. So, keeping, keeping DOT folks working through SPOLOX.
Okay. Thank you, Rocky.
District One's budget, this is coming out of District One's budget?
Yes, it's coming from District One.
All right. Just wanted to be careful.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, any board members? At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Rocky. Next is, under Building Department Resolution requests an approval for additional streetlight in existing streetlight district in White Oak Hollow. Presenters, Mr. Michael Harris. Go ahead, Michael.
Good morning, board members. The property owners of White Oak Hollow subdivision have submitted a petition to the Building Department to add one additional streetlight to an existing streetlight district. The petition represents seventy-four percent, that's twenty out of twenty-seven lots of the property owners who are, in fact, in favor of the request. Henry County will pay the light, the monthly lighting charges, and in return, assess the property owners' additional three dollars and fifty-six cents annually, and that will be reflected on their property tax bill. The total streetlight fee per lot will increase from twenty-six thirty-five to twenty-nine ninety-one. This is in keeping with our process and procedures regarding streetlight additions, and at this time, staff is asking for approval of the resolution to approve the additional streetlight in the existing subdivision.
So, right now, Michael, there's six, and this would be one more to make it seven, correct?
That's correct.
And this one's going closer to Camp Brown Road, do you understand?
I believe it is, yes. Yeah. Near to the Camp Brown Road.
Any questions, any board members? At this time, I need a motion to, motion made by Mr. Preston, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Planning and Zoning, a resolution reducing the salaries of the Henry County Zoning Advisory Board members. Ms. Sherri Matthews will be presented this morning. Good morning, Sherri.
Good morning, Vice Chair and Board members. As Commissioner Stamey has indicated, the resolution before you this morning is a resolution based on the adoption of the fiscal year 2013 budget. As you all are aware, the budget was approved on May thirtieth, and as a result, there were numerous items within the planning and zoning budget that was reduced. As a result, the salaries for the zoning advisory board is paid out of our office and administrative costs, and that line item was reduced as well. So, staff is bringing a resolution to you all this morning to accurately reflect that the planning and zoning salaries have been, will be reduced. Currently, our zoning advisory board members, they receive a stipend of two hundred dollars a month. The chairman receives two fifty, and that's whether you attend the meeting or not. Our meetings are held every other month, so it's not twelve days, I mean, twelve months, it's not every month, but every other month. What staff has recommended, and it is reflected in the resolution, that the amount be reduced from the two hundred dollars for the board members to one hundred dollars, and then the chairman to be reduced from two fifty to one fifty. I've checked with other jurisdictions, and it appears that what we are requesting is in line with some of our surrounding jurisdictions. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Sure. It looks like the overall savings has taken us from ninety-seven hundred and fifty dollars a year down to fifty-one hundred dollars a year, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions, any board members? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, or approval or denial to reduce the salaries of the Henry County Zoning Advisory Board. Move to approve. Mr. Holder, second by, there is a second, is there a second? One more time, is there a second on the motion on the floor? Okay. Motion dies where a lack of second, is there an altered motion?
Make a motion to leave the salaries where they currently are.
There's a motion by Mr. Bowman to leave the salaries at their current rate, which would be two hundred for the board members and two fifty for the chair. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes. Any other discussion on this item? At this time, I'll take a vote, and all in favor? Holmes, Preston, and Bowman in favor, and Mr. Holder opposed. Thank you. Motion carries three to one. Sorry about that, Sherri.
Okay. Thank you.
That's why we have public votes. Next item on the public hearing, resolution approval ordinance to amend Chapter Seven of Standards in Sector and Tipper uses, dealing with fences. Go ahead, Sherri.
Okay, this item is a text amendment that was actually not as a recommendation from staff, but actually from an applicant. It was Charles K. Penroyd of Locust Grove. He actually requested an ordinance to amend Chapter Seven, which is Table seven point oh two point oh four, letter B, types of fences to allow a fence to be located within the front yard in accordance with Sections twelve oh two eleven and twelve oh three oh oh of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. This request would be a countywide amendment. Mr. Penroyd was notified by the code enforcement office that he was not allowed to erect a decorative fence in his front yard because he's located within a subdivision. The code enforcement department was correct in that, and because, because our current ordinance does not allow decorative fencing in the front yard if you're zoned RA and if you're less than two acres and within a subdivision. Mr. Penroyd petitioned to the zoning advisory board to have that, those stipulations removed and to just allow decorative fencing in any residential zoning district, irregardless of it being in a subdivision, and irregardless of the minimum acreage. The zoning advisory board did recommend approval of Mr. Penroyd's request, and I am bringing it forward to you all. Just wanted to add one additional stipulation. If the board does elect to approve the request, staff wanted to recommend that the request should not in any way conflict with any subdivision covenants or restrictions that may be in place. So, in the event that there is a subdivision covenant or restrictions that may not allow a fence in the front yard, that, that shall supersede any regulations that we have in our code. Yes, sir. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Bowman?
What's considered a decorative fence?
Decorative fencing can be your wood, masonry, or brick, brick-type materials.
So, just a, just a normal, let's just take a normal subdivision that's, has no covenants, and somebody could put up a six-foot privacy fence across the front of their yard?
That is what is being requested. As it is currently written in the code, if you're zoned RA and you're within a subdivision, you would not be allowed to do that. Mr. Penroyd is petitioning to you all to have that regulation removed. So, if you are in an RA subdivision, R-one, R-two subdivision, you would be allowed to put up a six-foot high fence if this is approved. And it could be brick, stone, stucco, wood, or masonry.
Seems like there could be some consequences to us doing a blanket over something like that. I mean, you know, if, if somebody came in and wanted to put a little split rail fence in front of their property just to make their property look better, I mean, that's one thing, but then they, you know, you could be in a subdivision and a guy decides he wants a six-foot chain link fence in front of his yard because he's got dogs. I mean, I'm just, I'm just, I think that if you open that up and you allow that cart blank, it, it just seems like to me it would be asking for some problems down the road.
Now, the chain link fence would not be permissible because it's not defined as the decorative. So, the chain link would only be permissible on the side and rear yard. The decorative would only be wood, stone, masonry, and wrought iron. So, those would only be the four allowable fence types allowed within the front yard.
But it could still be a completely, a complete fence with no vision through it, obviously.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Privacy. It could look like a fortress or something like that.
Any questions? At this time, I'll, excuse, this is a public hearing, correct? So, I need, is there anyone that'd like to speak in favor of the proposal?
And Mr. Penroyd is available.
Sir, if you come to the podium, please, and your name and address.
Yes, my name's Charles Penroyd, live in Locust Grove, seven oh five Derrick Place, and my, my petition is for, to have this code changed. I'm trying to put up a wrought iron fence across the front of my property. I did not, at the time, realize there was an ordinance against fences since we had no covenant in the subdivision, and it was RA-approved. Down the street from me is a chain link fence going across the front of a property. Once I started putting up my wrought iron fence, code enforcement came, issued me the citation, told me I could apply for a variance, found out you cannot get a variance on the fence. I was told that I would have to apply for having the code changed. Now, I know you was talking about, you know, privacy fences. My understanding, and I could be wrong on this, is decorative fence, if it would be wood, would be something like a picket fence or the split rail or something. The privacy fence, I don't really see that, my, my own self, as a decorative fence. So, you know, like I say, the code right now specifies that subdivisions RA cannot have a fence across the front. I'm looking at the fence for security reasons and also for safety. I've got nine grandchildren. When they're over at the house, they range in age from twenty down to five years old. Younger ones always want to keep up with their older grandchildren, cousins, siblings, and all. And even though the speed limit in the subdivision is twenty-five mile an hour, you could check with anyone, and the cars are flying down Derrick Place there at forty, forty-five mile an hour. It's, to me, it's a hazard, the way that things are going, crime and such, when you've got children. If you've got a fence there where they can play and they're separated from animals that could attack them, could present a danger, from predators that are, you know, maybe trying to pick up a child or something, I'm looking at the fence for security, for safety, and also for the appearance. I've got chain link, put chain link up on the sides and the back, but I wanted something that looked nice in the front. And this is what I was petitioning for, is to get it changed. I did not, as I say, I did not realize the code did not allow it, and I thought, well, I don't understand why the county would be acting as a homeowners association to restrict that in a area that does not have a homeowners association. If you want the restrictions, you know, buy your property in a area that has a homeowners But, you know...
What size lot is your lot in the subdivision?
It's a one and a quarter acre. All of them in the subdivision are one and a quarter acre.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the resolution? If not, is there anybody who'd like to speak in opposition? Let the record reflect, was there any? At this time, there's any questions, any board members?
I'd like to make a comment. I think we need to take a look and do a definition, because like the gentleman just stated, he didn't, he didn't know it, number one, but he also, he thinks the, a decorative wood fence is a split rail or something, and we just ascertained that it could be a six-foot, a seven-foot, an eight-foot privacy wood fence. So, I mean, I think maybe the, the deal here would be the definition of what the fence is before we do a, before we do a, you know, we vote on something that just opens it up to, take a, I mean, a quarter acre lot, take that and, and think about if somebody that gets real, wants to put an eight-foot high masonry fence, you know, all the way around it, because we said wood, stone, or stucco, or masonry, and you'd stucco and masonry. I think we need to do some definitions of exactly what we're, we're talking about doing here so that we don't open it up and have an issue down the road.
You want to?
I would like to table it until we have an opportunity to do definition and, and put it in order so that we'll, so that there'll be something where we don't just open it up to anything to put up.
Good point. Before we move to the motion, there's a question. Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
Sherri, Mr. Penroyd has already put his fence up, is that correct?
I haven't been out to the site, it's my understanding he's started erecting the fence.
Okay, that's, that's my point, and I, he didn't know and understand. Is that Ashley Trace subdivision?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's off Hampton Locust Grove Road, and that currently is in District Two, and it won't change until January one of next year. The election will be run based on the new lines, but he, his actual location is currently in District Two.
Any other comments, any board members?
President.
The only thing I'd like to say is, because Ashley Trace is, I know where that is, I wouldn't mind, I don't want to cause you any hardship, but I wouldn't mind, I mean, we got our folders just a few days ago. I wouldn't mind tabling it just so we could, I, I mean, I wouldn't mind being able to go out there and look at it, maybe even meet with you, just, and then get better definitions as well, as Commissioner Bowman said, just because I don't want to open up Pandora's box, but also we want to look at what your, your specific situation is.
Okay, at this time, Mr. Bowman, you made a motion to table the request, second by Mr. Preston. All in favor? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Next is item number C. It's an approval of the community development block grant. Mr. Michael Harris will be the presenter. Michael, is that the same one you just gave us on?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. While Julie's pulling up the file, just want to kind of give a quick overview on what's transpired to get us to this point right now. The county was notified back in February of this year that we have now become, met the requirement, become an entitlement community, and with that, we're now entitled to community development block grant funds. Upon notification, the county immediately began the process of, well, we met with HUD and HUD officials to begin the process of going through the stakeholder meetings to get community input on identifying the respective needs for our community. Once we were able to compile that list of, of identified needs, staff, working in conjunction with our consultant, Mullen and Lonergan, prepared a list of proposed projects and organizations for which we could utilize, with which the funds for this initial year could be used for, to fund. Our focus in that endeavor was to look at program... Our focus in that endeavor was to look at programs and projects and organizations that have been established here in Henry County, and they're already existing, whether that be the organization itself or existing programs. Yes. Step back and plop. Yeah. During this time, after we've identified the existing projects, we...
Can you slide that over so I can see the first column, please? There you go. Thank you, sir.
During that time, staff conducted a series of public hearings. Three public hearings were, were conducted in accordance with our citizen participation plan. We also made the plan available at public facilities, recreation centers, libraries, senior centers, and it's also on display at each of the city halls, as well as being available for viewing on our county website. At this time, let me step back just briefly, we were, because we, our notification came relatively late in the process, back in March, we reached out to HUD and requested a forty-five day extension, and we were granted that extension, obviously, this being our initial year, we were granted that extension from May fifteenth to June twenty-ninth. And we've been in contact with HUD, so our deadline for submittal of the plan to HUD has been June twenty-ninth, and that's the date we've been, we've been striving for since we were awarded the extension. At this time, the plan, draft document, we've gone through all the processes, we've gone through all the procedures, we have the document completed, with the exception of the annual action plan. And that's what determines the allocation, just for this initial year. The allocation is eight hundred, we're entitled to eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars right now, per year annually, and that'll be an ongoing allocation allotted to the, to the county. The documents that were required to submit are Consolidated Plan, which in essence addresses a five-year, the county's five-year plans, identifies objectives that the county is looking to, to, to address, and subsequently, that document is a annual action plan, which identifies the programs and projects and organizations that we're going to support for this first year. Had some initial meetings with the Board of Commissioners, to get some input based on our initial draft, and again, at this time, we're trying to get, we need to finalize our annual action plan. So, what I've done is prepared a series of options, and again, these options were based on comments that I've received, principally from the Board of Commissioners, detailing some of the issues and some of the allocation for the projects. I like to go through each one of the options, and then kind of get some input and feedback from the Commissioners. Again, my goal here today is to finalize the annual action plan, to nail down the projects and programs and organizations the Board wishes to support with the subsequent, with the associated funding allotments, and then authorization of, I also handed out a draft resolution for authorization for the Board to submit, to move forward, to submit to HUD for their review, and they can begin that process, and start the allotment. So, if I could, I'd like to kind of go through the list. I've delineated them, the projects identified, organizations or projects are on the left-hand side by category, and option one, two, three, in the fourth column, is option four, which would be the final board decision. So, again, I'll try to go through this relatively quickly, and certainly, if any board member has any questions, please let me know. Option one reflects the original draft that was initially submitted, and that was the draft that went forward for the thirty-day review period. It's the same allocations and programs as in the initial plan. It has an allocation for housing activities of two-hundred-and-ten thousand, and that's targeted toward the Fuller Center and the Southern Habitat, Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity. Public facilities allocation was three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, and that is made up of allocations to the Senior Center West, Locust Grove, City Hall for the Elevator, Helping In His Name Ministries, and community and schools. Public services, that allocation is, it's set at fifteen percent. HUD Regulation and Guidelines mandate that that allocation can be no more than fifteen percent, so we are locked in to one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars for the public services portion of this funding. And the identified programs on the initial draft were Connected Henry, Haven House, Hands of Hope Clinic, a Friends House, the First Foundation, and again, communities and schools. And the last category is for administration, and that can be maxed out at twenty percent, we felt it was necessary for this, particularly for this initial year, to maintain that twenty percent. And again, just so I'm clear, while twenty percent equates to one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, all that is not salary, very small percentage of that would be for salary, but the vast majority of those funds would be used for additional technical support, administrative, administrative costs, reports that are required by HUD in this initial year, so a lot of that administrative cost would be wrapped up into those items. Moving forward to option number two, the allotment for the senior center was reduced by one-hundred-and-fifty thousand, from two-hundred-and-fifty down to one-hundred thousand, and the community and schools under public facilities was deleted in its entirety to twenty thousand dollars, and the thirty-two-thousand-five-hundred for community and schools and public services. Subsequently, came back and added one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars to the housing activities, and that was split between the Fuller Center and Habitat for Humanity. Forty-five thousand was added back for community and schools, just under the public facilities portion, and based on their proposal, their intent is to use the forty-five thousand to establish early, early head start programs. Right now, there's one existing in the county in Locust Grove, and the goal for this initial year would be for them to extend, extend that program into the city of Stockbridge, McDonough, and in Hampton. And that fifteen thousand would be used for renovation of classrooms to acquire that, to achieve that, that goal. And they've been working with the state right from the start, so they have a, and they're also leveraging their funds with some other funding opportunities as well. It includes an addition of five thousand dollars to the Feed My People organization located in Stockbridge, and that's for express need of a compressor for that facility, and that's under public facilities. It also identifies twenty thousand dollars for the Art Reach One Eighty program, and touch into this now, there was a, there was a strong outcry for Boys and Girls Clubs throughout this process. We heard a, we had received a number of comments in public settings, as well as comments that were received by email. Yes, Commissioner?
Question, as you know, hundreds of people showed up from the board to support the Boys and Girls Club.
Yes.
I can't tell you how many emails we've gotten, there's even a petition. Is there a reason why the Boys and Girls Club couldn't be on this list?
Their initial request from Boys and Girls Club, and we've worked closely with Dr. Sheila Maxwell, who's heading up their, their organization on the local level, and their initial request was for a hundred thousand dollars for assistance to renovate a fire station. They're working on trying to acquire a lease with a fire station within the city of Stockbridge, and that was their goal. Their proposal was predicated on them receiving that lease agreement. Because just as late as last week, we were notified that the lease agreement was not signed, therefore, their request, which was contingent upon them receiving the lease agreement, was no longer, was no longer applicable. So, what we did do was, reached out to some of the members that were supporting the Boys and Girls Club, in this case, Ms. Gina Moore, who spoke during the public hearings, I believe you heard from some of the students that were representing the Art Reach One Eighty program, which is very much a Boys and Girls Club-type program. You know, some of the challenges with the Boys and Girls Club has been the identification of a facility. I've heard consensus on support for the programs, challenge has been identifying the facility.
Yeah, I know, I know it came, I know the, the point came up where they were looking at the, the fire station, but there are a number of other areas on that North Henry Boulevard that, you know, they could have had the ability to lease, and some funding from the CDBG funds would have gone a long way to at least help them get the, the program started in Henry County.
Yeah, the challenge we were faced with was, you know, we, for those organizations that came forward, we asked them to provide some proposals, and the proposal they, they submitted to us, it was contingent upon that particular lease. And so, when that didn't happen, that didn't go forward, we had to continue, again, with the time constraints we were dealing with and working under, we had to look at continuing to move forward. So, we did identify, look to identify a program that addressed that after-school, that after-school need.
It just seemed like there was a lot of criteria put on the Boys and Girls Club that wasn't put on any other, you know, anything else. So, just want to make that point.
Mr. Preston, you got a question?
Yeah. The only thing I want to kind of draw a light to some things is that a few years ago, it was actually going on three years now, the intergovernmental session that we all had, where we had all the county commissioners, all the cities, we had the hospital, we had pretty much a lot of the stakeholders, we met three years ago to talk about exactly what we can do to impact children and students on a long-term basis. And from that, we created the Economics and Education Task Force, and I was, I was on the Board of Education time, so I was asked to be the co-chair of that, and we've now created, it's really been amazing what has come out of the economics and education, to where we've actually got an alliance, it's the Henry County Community Alliance, that will be made up of the superintendent, who will also have communities and schools, and what, it's going to be kind of a clearinghouse, because one of the first things we realized with the task force was, we had a lot of different things going in different directions, meaning if you saw the slide, was you had all these people trying to do different things, and a lot of them were doing the exact same thing, and we could have leveraged their resources together to have even a bigger impact. So, we've now brought, where we have a collaborative, and it's very unique in the entire state, I'd say pretty much in the southeast, to have so many government organizations, stakeholders come together and say, what can we do as a community? And now, they've created a priority list, and I noticed everyone on here that's dealing with children getting ready to go to school, K through twelve, and even work-ready after school, is Connecting Henry, First Foundation, Communities and Schools. I wasn't as familiar with Art Reach One Eighty, and I would be happy to let you know, last meeting, we just had our education and economics meeting in the last week, and Boys and Girls Club was there, it was the first time I've seen them at, at the meeting for that group. I would suggest that in the future, so we can streamline this, because we're not the experts on how to, to spread this money out, to have the biggest impact, because we are trying to hit boots-to-ground as efficiently as possible, is that we empower some of those organizations that are already doing, and I'm not saying we have to change this right now, but I'm saying next year, because this is five years that we're going to be doing this. I'd like us to figure out, and I added it up, if you do the Connecting Henry, that's twenty thousand, First Foundation was ten, Communities and Schools was thirty-two, that worked out to be approximately half of that fifteen percent. In the future, we could talk about, maybe we move that money around with its forty percent, thirty percent, sixty percent. We just give it to them, they're the experts, we are not the experts, and that also allows us to funnel those resources, because I think Boys and Girls Club has a great national reputation, but it's a brand-new program here in, in Henry County. I want to make sure that every dollar, this is very important to the citizens and taxpayers, gets implemented with boots-to-ground as much as possible. And I know when I've started a company, when I've worked on foundations, the first year to two years is administratively, you're trying to get the ball rolling, you're trying to get to that critical mass where you can have an impact on the community. I'd like to make sure that we, we just involve the people who are the experts that are already working collaboratively, and I'll tell you, talking to Communities and Schools grant money, talking about making this little bit of money turn into big money, they love seeing that you've got all stakeholders involved, and that way, we can take this little bit of money and hopefully balloon it up with federal grants and other grants that are out there, that doesn't cost a taxpayer a dime, and we can make use. And I think that will help people, so we're not all pulled in different directions when that's not our expertise. And I think it's just unique, because I come from an education background, and was co-chairing that, that task force, that I can add some of that insight, that hopefully will address this going forward.
You know, that's a great point, and we've actually, as a staff, myself, Sherry, Julie, we've talked about the exact same thing, developing a collaborative, because when we started the process, we started bringing the stakeholders in, we found out there are a number of organizations, many of which are doing the same thing, so looking at what means and the mechanism, they're getting them all on the same table. You know, a lot of them had the same, you know, early childhood, you know, after-school programs, some of the same, you know, common, common issues continue to, to come to the forefront.
Many people may not know that the Boys and Girls Club is a Georgia organization, and if the Boys and Girls Club were to be implemented in Henry County, it would be an extension of the Atlanta, the Atlanta organization. So, the support is already there. I think the CDBG funds would have gone a long way as a capital outlay to get them started in the community.
Yeah, and I agree, and again, I said, we, I spoke with Dr. Sheila Maxwell as late as last week, you know, and shared with her that, you know, it's certainly our desire to continue to work with them on an ongoing process, and I think, again, I think the collaborative, Commissioner Preston mentioned, is an excellent way to do that. You know, and, and what I shared with her was, while I understood the issues and the challenges associated with finding the facility and getting that nailed down, it's certainly our intent, from a county standpoint, to continue to work with her and all, any organization that, that addresses the needs and objectives as outlined in our Consolidated Plan. Again, one way to do that, we're so pressed for time, we wanted to make sure that we did as much good as we could possibly do with this eight-hundred-and-fifty, I think you may have heard in some previous conversations, that the requests we received were well in excess of four million dollars, and we had eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to kind of work with. So, again, I spoke with Dr. Maxwell and shared with her my thoughts on tapping into the Art Reach program, which again, is an after-school program, we've heard some of the accolade, number of accolades from different organizations, speaking about that particular organization, because it is an after-school program, and very much a Boys and Girls Club type program, so talked to them about expanding from their current location in Stockbridge, they're currently operate out of Patrick Henry High, and extending, expanding to include another location in McDonough.
We had a couple of conversations about this, and one of the things, Boys and Girls Club, I really don't know a lot about them, I have had a lot of emails and other things sent to me, and I think they're probably just a great organization. I know that we've been kind of put under the timeframe and the hammer to try and get this hammered out, so we can get it, we don't need to ask for another extension, we really don't need to do that. One of the things, and I've asked Brian this, and, and actually Warren also, because Warren had served on the school board, is we have so many facilities, it seems like to me to put a hundred thousand dollars out there for another facility, when, when the need in, in the Stockbridge area, and I'm talking about District Four Stockbridge area, is Ty Street, and we've got Smith Barnes sitting right there, and we've got, I mean, it's a, you know, to go and do, I mean, I don't, I don't understand why some of these organizations can't work with, with that type of situation. In District Five, you've got the library, the rec center, you've got some places where they can do it without expending a lot of cost to, to reinvent the wheel and have another facility. And, you know, the schools, I asked that particular question with Brian, and Warren also told me that the schools would work with Boys and Girls Clubs and others in order to, to make things like that happen. I think early childhood is great, I think, you know, we want to, we need to do it as quickly as we possibly can, but I also think that the, you know, the HUD, the Block Grant is, there's a whole lot of that for, you know, for housing, you know, HUD is housing, urban development, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's to try and bring all of that into one place, and I understand only having eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and really, if you'd opened it up anymore, that four million would have turned into eight million dollars worth of, because we, we see that all the time, just in the county, you know, in our own budget, how things continue to, to expand and expand. So, I would certainly hope that, I know we got to move on this one, but I'd certainly hope that we could bypass some of the things about the, you know, in the future about, okay, let's, let's do another building or another building, let's utilize some of the buildings that we currently have, let's do some things with those, I think it would work out a lot better, and that was just more of a comment, but I wanted to bring it up, because I talked to Commissioner Holder and Commissioner Preston about the ability. I mean, Ty Street is out, is the District Four, that's our, you know, that's our, our poverty section, and we've got sitting dead in the middle of it, Smith Barnes Elementary School, that we could utilize certain, you know, structures there that we're already paying for, so, anyway. That's all. Commissioner Holder, you got a comment?
I do, going along with what Commissioner Bowman just said. The request from Boys and Girls Clubs was for us to, the hundred thousand dollars was for the renovation of that building, it wasn't for the programming. Am I correct, or am I not correct?
That's correct. Initial, their initial proposal was for a hundred thousand to assist with the renovation costs.
Because they were going to fund the programming. Okay, it, it just makes perfect sense, when the highest concentration of your usage is right there in the Ty Street area, you have several options, and I want to call on Tim Colley in a minute while he's here. But you also have, in walking distance of Ty- also have, in walking distance of Ty Street, you have the Patrick Henry, the old Stockbridge High School gym. You also have Stockbridge Elementary Gym, all of which are within walking distance of the Ty Street area, along with Smith Barnes. And the question that I would have of Tim, Tim, uh, Tim Colley, do you currently not have an agreement with the Board of Education for use of facilities for recreational basketball, utilizing some of the gyms like Henry Middle and Stockbridge?
Yes.
Okay. That's my point. Those, those, those agreements exist. And I think that if, if Boys and Girls Clubs are, are looking for the hundred thousand dollars to renovate a building, I don't think it would be cost-effective for us to do it. It's certainly not justified when the buildings are, are there. And I think it's just for the asking. In that way, it would not affect the programming, and it would put the program right in the neighborhood of the highest concentration that has been identified where the need is. So I think it's, um, I think it's something that's certainly workable, and I think it would be a lot more cost-effective for the, for the taxpayers of this county.
So, you know, classrooms be available under the agreement that you have with the school system? Not just the gym, the classrooms?
Right.
Is it possible to ask for the classrooms, so they can try to get the program going? I do think Patrick Henry would be a great location. So if you have access to, if they have access to the gyms, would they also have access to the classrooms as well?
They, the agreement that we have with the Board of Education is, is up to each individual principal. So if they have space that they're not utilizing, and they have a way to secure their other facilities, um, I'm sure that they would work with us. The, the, the main thing that they want is to be able to secure their facilities. So you can get them, we have, if we go into a gym, we have access to the gym, but they don't have access to the whole school. So as long as that principal feels comfortable that they can secure the rest of their facility, I'm sure they would work with you.
And then, and just a comment, at Smith Barnes, is Mike Hady not still the principal? Well, he's so community-oriented. I mean, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to, to, to work any way he could with the, the clubs, or with anybody that's, that betters that community.
Yeah, and going forward, from our point, from our standpoint from staff, we would love to be able to continue to work with them, to flesh out those details, and work with Tim, and work with the Board of Education if we can. And we wanted, but we did, we, we felt it was, because we had such an outcry for those programs, we felt it was important to try and identify a program, which we felt Art Reach 180 does do that. But certainly going forward, we look to, look to work with them on how to, you know, where and how to nail down a facility.
The, the other thing I was, because you ties directly into what you're saying, is that we see a need, and then how do we leverage off of it? The economics and education is also working with Communities and Schools. We saw a lot of people were talking about Head Start programs. And a lot of that was going to be, how do you, where do you put these people? How do we come up with these classrooms and other things? And what they've come up with, and this is part of what they're going to be able to leverage for even more grant money, is they're going to work with Bright From the Start, which is a, that we're going to be a pilot program. Henry County ought to be so pleased with themselves that we're, the state is coming to us. I mean, the state's putting together a program called Bright From the Start. We're going to be one of their first pilot programs because of what's happened with economics and education, that we're going to be able to go into daycare facilities and other things that already have existing structures, and go ahead and hit the ground running and implement a lot of these things. That's what I like, is that collaboration, that with just a little bit, we have huge impact, and hopefully gets the, the things fixed. That's exactly what these community development grants are looking to do.
Yeah, our initial, the initial proposal was looking at a partnership between community schools and McIntosh Trails. And McIntosh Trails is currently, they are currently operating in Henry County and Locust Grove, and that is the only early Head Start program, Head Start program in Henry County. Um, so, but they have a select number of, of slots, if you will, for early Head Start. So the initial proposal was to, I think they have 16 slots, we're going to take half of those slots and extend them into McDonough, in order to, so we're not doubling the program, we're just simply splitting the program. What this does, um, we're working with Bright From the Start with the state, it actually, you know, utilizing existing daycare facilities, rather than just splitting what we currently have in Locust Grove, we're able to leave Locust Grove intact with 16 slots, and now look at identifying a separate location in McDonough, Stockbridge, and in Hampton. So rather than just splitting that one Locust Grove, now, you know, this works out the way, again, community schools have done a great job of leveraging their funds to secure other grant funding as well. Um, so rather than just the one additional, now we're talking about three additional early Head Start facilities.
Mr. Bowman, go ahead.
Given the fact that, um, you know, there may be some facilities that are willing to work with the Boys and Girls Club. I know McDonough also, I think they've identified a school down there near the Blacksville area. Um, they're still going to need some administrative, um, funds to help run those, those programs. So I, I would hope that we would consider allocating some funds from the CDBG to help out with, with their startup.
Yeah. And again, I don't, um, I think there's still a lot of questions that need to get answered right now, again, nailing down a facility, getting the program established here. Our focus, as, as I mentioned earlier, was really on, because we had such a compressed timeframe, was really looking at identifying programs that were currently existing within the community, that were already up and established. Again, because there is, there is that, that, that timeline that takes place in getting the, getting the new program up and established within a community. So because we had the time constraints we did, we wanted to really look at and focus on existing programs, existing, um, organizations. So going forward, Commissioner Holder, you're absolutely right. I mean, we, and again, that's what our conversation with Dr. Maxwell was, was that we're going to continue to work together as a, you know, over the course of the next few months, I'm sure they're going to be working to get those things in place. And, and, and for the benefit of, of the board, and for those who may be watching, going forward, you know, this process did represent a compressed process because we had time constraints. Going forward, we will have a, a more formalized application process that will allow, you know, far greater time to be able to vet through the different programs, grade through the programs, evaluate the, uh, different programs. So the process going forward will be far more comprehensive. But we didn't want to jeopardize our funding this year, that's why we moved as quick as we did.
Any other questions?
Um, if I may, just, I want to just kind of touch on the difference on the last option, which is option number three. Um, and that involved the removal of the 250,000 from the senior center in its entirety. And again, the deletion of the funding from the, the 20,000 for CIS on public facilities, and 20,000 from CIS under public services. That money comes back to CIS in the form of, um, public facilities, 45,000. And again, that's for the classroom renovations, for three classrooms. We did add a hundred thousand dollars for infrastructure improvements in low to moderate income areas, and that would be to address sewer line work, piping, that may be in, you know, flood control areas that may be necessary, and, and targeted low to moderate income areas. Um, again, added, went back and added the 120,000 dollars to the housing activities, split between Fuller Center and Habitat for Humanity, added, as noted, the 45,000 for CIS for public facilities, kept the 20,000 dollars in there for the Art Reach 100, 180 program, um, added 5,000 dollars for the compressor at Feed My People. And also, um, added a little bit more money from the original allocation to the previous programs. Um, we just upped the amount that was allocated to those programs that had previously been receiving funding for the county. Um, those were, um, Connecting Henry, Haven House, Hansel Hope Clinic, Friends House. Over the course of the last few years, their funding from the county has been substantially cut. So, um, this third option does also represent a slight addition to what we had previously allocated in option number one.
Mike, you, you mentioned sewer and, um, option three. Would the areas be identified?
We haven't identified them as of yet, but it, it would have to be, it would have to meet the criteria for low to moderate income area. So, um, Commissioner Bowman talked about the Ty Street area, you know, certainly areas within Hampton area.
Fairview.
Fairview, you know, Fairview, you know, where we identify within the Fairview area, um, and within the Locust Grove area as well.
Mr. Preston, go ahead.
Um, Michael, I, I had a chance over the weekend to look at the notes that y'all compiled, and y'all had a rough task of trying to, you know, make sure you listed all, what was said at the meetings. The one thing I noticed that was not listed was who was in the audience at the meetings. It's, like, I know that one of the first meetings we had discussing these grant funds.
Right.
City of Hampton pretty much filled up the whole, I guess, depending on my left side of the auditorium. We had the mayor here, we had pretty, pretty much the entire city council, and as well as the city manager.
Yes.
None of that's really reflected in this stuff. I mean, I saw emails and other things, but nothing reflected the attendance of what was going on at the meetings. The other, the other thing I think is we have to just look at what the outline of what HUD lets us do with this, is that the areas of highest need is actually west of 75, with the Hampton area having a poverty level of 19.1%, close to 20%. Um, Locust Grove's at 11%, McDonough's at 12.8, and Stockbridge is at 10.9. Um, the minimum for, for them to fill ideal is around 15%. So Hampton is the white-hot center for where LMI is the biggest impacted area. Um, when I look at the resources of District 2, which is west of 75, I mean, you, you look at all of our shopping plazas that are, you know, on Jonesboro Road with, you know, everybody loves going to that entire shopping complex over there on Jonesboro Road. I know with South Point now, you know, off of exit 218, with 2081, that's also west of 75. We have a lot of SPOSS revenue coming in from our district. We also have the Speedway, which is a huge economic engine. But when I look at the services of the second district, what I see is, is that we have, um, three rec centers that are on the east side of 75, zero on the west side. Senior centers, we have three on the east side of 75, zero on the west side. Twenty-four parks that are on the east side of 75, only three on the west side. And the white-hot center is west of 75. And when I look at this list, if we take off the senior center, and I'm willing to, I'm willing to say, well, that's because I've heard the need, I've heard people discuss it. We could talk about evolving that senior center into a multi-use facility, where it could be seniors as well as recs. We just need to see something happen for west of 75, because it was promised as part of SPOSS 2. We're about to be, we've done, been done with SPOSS 2. We're now in SPOSS 3. SPOSS 3 is close to being done. We're soon going to be asking citizens for a SPOSS 4 in the coming years. And I just don't know if the, the paying in and the people enjoying the, the resources of District 2, if we feel like we're getting really representation of getting the assets and other things and services to that with what's happened. So I, I just want to kind of make sure we, we frame that in the proper way, because it, it, the only thing I see on option 2 and 3 is that we're trying to take resources from the white-hot center of what LMI and what HUD and, and this, this grant money is actually for.
Right. And just to address, um, what, the, in regards to the, we did include the minutes, and that'll be a, a part of the package of the final document, and that will reflect everyone who spoke, um, for whatever organization they spoke with, whether in support of the senior center, or support of the Boys and Girls Club, that'll be reflected in the minutes, and that'll be included in the final draft document. Also, there's a sign-in sheet that will also be included in the final draft document as well. It may not have been in, in this package, but, you know, they, all that will be included in the final draft document to reflect who was there, who attended the meetings.
Mr. Bowman, go ahead.
I'll say this at the last meeting. Um, I don't think you can look at a ci, a, a city in terms of the poverty, poverty rate or high-income rates. I mean, if you look at Ty Street, and you look at Blacksville, you, there are probably no poorer areas, in areas in the county, um, that need these type of funds allocated to them. Uh, but one thing, um, question I do have, there's been a lot of talk about District 2, what was promised to District 2, and SPOSS 1, 2, and 3. Um, can somebody explain to me what those promises were? Because I wasn't on the board then, but I'm curious to know.
I don't know. I mean, I-
What's some promises?
I think you're referring to the- The promise list would be the list that that was actually voter-approved. It was voter-approved on, on 2 and 3. And if you're referring to the, the senior center, which it, it actually rolled from 2 to 3, and I think it should, we, we can even talk about that further, it should stay in a SPOSS 3 project. But, um, all the road improvements, anything that was voted on by the voters, that's the list, that's the promise.
But Brian just mentioned there were, there were some things that were promised that didn't happen in District 2.
There, I mean, I wasn't on the Board of Commissioners, but there have been staff and others that have met with District 2 and said, we hear your concerns, and we want you to have this, because we do feel like it's something that should be provided. Um, and that, and that's one of the things. I mean, and you've heard the numbers. I mean, look at it statistically, when, I can go through them again, but when you look at parks, rec, and then senior centers, we're looking at pretty much a rounding error over west of 75, where somebody accidentally gave us a few things. I mean, and that's the point I'm trying to rectify, is that we actually have something over there, even though we have all these resources. Everybody loves our shopping, everybody loves our, our, the, the Speedway. But we don't like the scene to, to, to pitch in and, and help out, and, you know, with that, the west of 75.
Nobody's really addressing my question. I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out what were the promises that were made in SPOSS 1 and 2, and nobody's really told me anything.
Nobody has a full answer. I would-
Please.
Well, I was here.
Man, oh man.
I was, I was here. And I can stand to be corrected, because this goes back a few years, but in SPOSS 2, I believe it was, Gary Freeman was a commissioner from District 2, I was a commissioner from District 1. And, uh, the wording in the resolutions stated a senior center to be built in Districts 1 and 2. Okay, that was splitting hairs. At one time, the interpretation was to build one senior center. Well, where are you going to build it? You going to build it in Luella? Then you would have, of course, today Luella has built up. But you would have built a senior center that wouldn't have been practical for the citizens of Hampton nor Locust Grove. Didn't get done. Didn't happen in District, in, in, in either district in SPOSS 2. Comes back in SPOSS 3, and it identifies two centers. The opportunity became available for the Locust Grove Events Center, which we saw on the screen today, became available as a project that Locust Grove had. It was a win-win for the city and also for the county. If that building had been located in Hampton or in District 2, I would have supported it. It wasn't. And I understand what you're saying, Commissioner, about we have been promised, but don't feel like a stepchild yet. Because sitting over there, there's eight million dollars that you saw this morning, that has been spent at Nash Farms. So just to say that nothing has happened west of I-75 is not correct. If you went back and, and compared, and I have, what has been spent in, in SPOSS, also in impact fees, and you saw there was very little that's been spent from general funds in this entire period of '04 to present, that Ms. Ernst had presented to us. I think another thing that, that you need to look at is the fact, too, that as far as the revenue generator from impact fees-
We'll give you full credit for Tanger, I spend a lot of money over there.
No, as far as the, the economic generator of impact fees, you're going to find that District 2 has generated more than any other district. Second was District 1, and it goes on down the line. Many times, those are not distributed according to the way they came in. And obviously, in this case, it wasn't. But back to your question, Bruce, that is how the people west of 75 did not get a senior center. District 1 got one. Go back, look at the record, look at the language in, in SPOSS 2 and in 3, and if I'm wrong, please let me know.
Can you, maybe I shouldn't be asking this question. Clarify the eight million dollars in Nash Farms. And how, what does that have to do with the senior center?
Well, look, those are dollars that came, you saw this morning, it came from impact fees.
Now, I, I, okay, I'm, I'm trying to be polite here, but we, if we went by some of the things that were done in the past, we, I, I think we could go through every district and go, what in the world were we thinking?
Well, what are you trying to say?
But that's what I'm saying, so I don't, I don't like to talk about-
Excuse me, Commissioner, but if you're going for- Excuse me, Commissioner, but if you're going from today forward, then that's one thing. Are you going to try to mix what's done in the past and not, not consider it all?
I think we have, I'm looking forward how we move forward, I can go through the staff again.
Then we don't consider the past, then, and we look ahead.
So we're going to have one purchase skewer us from ever getting anything again because we're going to say, "Hey, we gave you guys some access to capital, and y'all bought a, a, you know, Nash Farms, so from now on, you, you are the stepchild you don't get anymore." That, that is kind of what it sounds like.
You're not, you're not listening to me. Look at Heritage Park and the amount of money that's been spent at Heritage. Look at Mosley Park, look at all of your regional parks. Look at North Mount Carmel and see what's been spent west of seventy-five. So those are significant numbers. You can pick it apart. But if you're not going to look back and we just forget the past and look forward, then we've got a bright future. You cannot change the past. But you were saying we, District Two had never got anything, and I, I, I highly disagree with that. They have, they not got their share. But let's consider it all, when you say Nash Farms, well, we didn't really want Nash Farms. Your representative at the time wanted Nash Farms. Just like I was asked why McDonough didn't have a rec center and just happened to be out at Recreation. I said, "Well, if you look across at the Jason T. Harper Events Center, that is your rec center." It was the choice of the people who were elected at the time to spend those dollars the way they wanted to spend them. And that's the way it was. Eight million went to Hampton or went to Nash Farms. The record shows that, and nothing you can do to change it.
Michael, let's get back to our original proposals here.
Mr. Bache, what I'm, what I'm asking for today is if the board would be willing to vote to move forward on either one, option one, two, or three, or if it's the board's desire to come up with a hybrid approach and identify other programs or other allocations. But at this point, the last piece we're missing in this document is simply a finalization on how we allocate this eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So I'm looking for some direction on the board on if, if the board, if it's the board's desire to move forward with one of these options or if the board would like to move forward with a different option as proposed.
Okay, at this time, there's three proposals before you, could even be a fourth one, and I'll entertain a motion or some comments on this.
I'll make a motion for option one.
There's a note, motion on the floor to entertain, approve option one, is there a second? There's a motion on the floor to entertain option one, is there a second? Motion dies for a lack of second, is there an altered motion?
I'm making a motion for option three.
There's a motion with Mr. Bowman to approve option three, the second by Mr. Holmes. Any other comments?
There is.
Go ahead, Mr. Holder.
Option three completely leaves out the senior slash rec center to the west. I think that's wrong. It's, 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 it's not wrong to leave it out of this program, but it's wrong not to fund it. And I know it's been circulated among commissioners that rather than, and I think it would be a better fit also, that rather than that center in the west part of Henry County, oh, west, west Henry, excuse me, that's the other Henry County, the way I'm being told, in the other Henry. I think that if, if there are any SPOSS savings in various capital projects that it needs to be utilized, and, and I certainly would, would give anything that I could give up, if I have any, to fund it at the level that we're talking about. But to me, it would be a better fit to SPOSS because sooner or later, if it gets built, it's going to end up being a SPOSS project or a, um, impact fee project because there's not enough funds anywhere else to do it.
Absolutely. Michael, me, me and, uh, Commissioner Holder's had that conversation.
Yes.
About taking capital money, Mike Bush, from, uh, from every body's district to help fund this because realistically, that's the list it stays on, that's the list should fund it. It's always been a SPOSS Three project.
I think there is.
But if there's any money there, I would be willing to participate, too, because I think it's, it's a need. But to put it in this, in this grant just to be barred against in the future is not the right way, thing to do with money. Absolutely. Mr. Holder, you've got it.
No, I, I was just asking Mr. Bush if he has a clue whether we have that much capital.
There is, there is currently money left over from the Hampton Library and some other projects. There's a lot of money in, in park projects that I don't necessarily know if it's already been encumbered or whatever. You know, you guys work with Rod and, I'm sorry, Ron and, and them all that. But we can definitely sit down, I can sit down with Ron and verify any money left over in any kind of park or any kind of capital project.
And I think it's, I think it's a desire, would be a desire, the majority of the board to at least figure out how much funds is available from each district, that breakdown, and get that list to us and let us figure out how we can at least fund it, get it off the ground. But the bottom line is if we built it today, we can't staff it. So we even look even, even dumber there. Hold on, just, just, hold on, Mr. Preston's been waved.
Yeah, and I want to address the staffing, but also, I'm nervous about moving forward this vote then without more concrete information because I just don't want to see us push this away, and then we find out when we look at the numbers, we don't have enough money to do this and y'all move forward. Because if you move forward without anything going on, because if you ask Hampton and west of seventy-five what the priority is, they'll tell you when they interviewed, what was their first priority.
Senior center.
So if you take that away, the white-hot center statistically, according to the Census Bureau, according to HUD, will receive, nothing on here is based out of, none of these great organizations are based out of west of seventy-five. So you've essentially taking money that we get a lot of attention for because of our poverty levels west of seventy-five, and none of it's going to seven, to, to west of seventy-five.
Well, Commissioner, I would say that. Yes. Mike, let me stop you right there one second. There's, there's no, that statement is false because the Fuller Center and Habitat will cross all county lines, I mean, all.
But they're not based in, in west of seventy-five.
It has no, has nothing to do with where you're based. We're based here in, in District One, but the funds go elsewhere. But you, you're talking about, uh, uh, two, two of these projects right here that will hit the poor area, and they go across all commissioner lines, period.
That's correct, as well as the infrastructure improvements in low to moderate income areas. That was mentioned from a number of the jurisdictions, particularly Hampton as well. I know they have some areas within similar low-mid areas, um, um, low-to-mid areas that need some infrastructure repair work. So the housing assistance, that would be countywide. The low-to-mid income on infrastructure improvement certainly would be. The community and schools, as they are looking at expanding their early childhood, one of the locations would also be in Hampton. And again, other organizations such as Help, um, Helping in His Name and Feed My People, those are also county-wide organizations that, that serve everyone in the community.
Mr. Bowman?
I mean, I, I totally disagree with, with Brian. I mean, I totally disagree with that issue because, I mean, are we saying that Hands of Hope Clinic won't take anybody from Hampton just because they're located at, at the hospital which gives them free space? Are we saying that, that the, uh, the Friends House won't help, you know, they're west of seventy-five, they're not going to come in? No, uh-uh. I mean, you know, that, that, really, none of that makes any sense to me. Connecting Henry, I mean, most, a lot of this, not most of it, but a lot of this, like, like Commissioner Stamey said, is located right here in District One. I mean, you know, Hands of Hope Clinic's in District Four, but, I mean, yeah, Hands of Hope Clinic and Helping in His Hands Ministry, I mean, they are. But I see people from all over the county there. I don't think that's just a District Four, oh, by the way, just District Four's going in there. And then I, I see somebody here from Habitat. Surely, you guys are going to do something in that white-hot community down over there on the other Henry County. I mean, that, that's putting, that's a putting a us against them thing. And I totally disagree with, uh, with Commissioner Preston on, on, on the way he's trying to sell that. And besides that, for us to go, the, the first thing on this, let's just go ahead and put it out there. The first thing, we're going to put two fifty in there, and then next year, we're going to put some more in there. Then we were going to go and bar the money, then we were going to build a senior center. And I would, I'm not going to ask the question of our county manager, but staffing it, I know that, uh, Commissioner Preston's got this quote-unquote idea of how he would staff it, but I don't know how you're going to rob from one to give to the other to staff in order to keep the budget the same because they can't hardly meet it now, and we're cutting them. So, you know, that's a lot of pain, and that's, that is a, I hate to do it, but I mean, you know, ju- just to play it up as a political move, that, that's really, that's really disheartening. And I don't think it ought to be in this program, that's my opinion. I don't think we ought to throw it out. I agree with Commissioner Holder, I don't think it ought to be thrown out. It's on the list, it's on the list as, I think, a tier-two because we're not getting the money. We're going to get three hundred million at one time, we're going to get two-hundred-and-forty million at another time. And now, all of a sudden, poor, 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 they're not being, I, I, I'm sorry. I totally disagree with that.
That's, thank you, sir.
If we could, y'all, let's drift back to the proposals here. And I know you had some concerns about whether or not there was any level of commitment, but I think you can see there's commitment from, from a SPOSS revenue side. There's not commitment from a, from a grant. So we're, we're back at option three.
There's a pending motion.
There's a motion.
There's a motion with a second. Any other questions before we vote on it? All in, all in favor of the, of approving option number three? There's three, uh, uh, four, all in post. Mr. Preston's votes against it, so.
Thank you.
Option three was what we approved. And I, Mike, if you would, I'd like to give you instruction from staff's point that we all get a breakdown of what's available in capital to at least, let's get moving with the proposed senior center. I think that is a priority from each and every board member here, not to overlook that. We're just looking at a different funding mechanism to fund it.
Thank you.
Excuse me one second, Mr. Holder.
I'd like to go on record as saying this, that this, this number that we're talking about would be absolutely no less than the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that was, uh, part of this program. And certainly, it would be for grading preparation to get it to the point to where it can go further. And I know it's been talked about, is would it be a design bill, so forth, so? And very well could be. And it can be, and very likely will be, a rec slash senior center. I know we've all been to Newton County and various other counties looking at a facility such as this. And I don't want, I'm going to go on record as committing that we will not get them less than the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, but I think it should come from SPOSS rather than from, than from a grant.
I will support that, too.
Not to belabor this, but we, there is also an accompanying resolution, just as got authorization for staff to move this forward. Do we have to do that, that, that does, all that does?
Does it complete it?
Yeah, to complete this.
It's the plan completed, all the comments, it's done.
Well, it would be, we would have to add the minutes from this meeting into the plan based on the outcome of this meeting, add that to the plan, and then with that being done, then move it forward, submit it to HUD. Feel it needs to come back, or can we do that all in one action tonight?
I disagree.
Okay. If we could, pass a resolution to submit the application, submit the document to plan to HUD based on the information that we received in this meeting and inclusive of the information received in this meeting.
Ms. County Clerk, you have that notes. At this time, there's a resolution before you, I need a motion to, I need a motion moved to approve of Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Excuse me, the motion was to approve the resolution in the, in the verbiage that he just said, County Clerk has, to move forward. We're not changing the verbiage. Repeat the verbiage.
It's a resolution for the Board of Commissioners to approve the consolidated plan, and that would be based on and including the information, based on the information that was provided by the board today, to include that into the plan, and then from there, submit that plan document to HUD for approval.
Any other comments?
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? All opposed, Mr. Preston opposed it. Motion carries three to one.
Thank you.
Okay, next on there is, we're going to move on to D, which is a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners concerning the personal care moratorium exemption request by Mr. Jeffrey Boy- Bowman, I mean Boyd, excuse me. The presenter is going to be Mr. Moody, correct?
Good morning. I'm having some voice issues this morning. I wanted to point out that Mr. and Ms. Boyd are here, but Stephanie Curry will be presenting.
Okay, one thing for point of clarification, Ms. County Attorney, this is not a public hearing, correct?
You are correct, sir.
Thank you, go ahead, Stephanie.
Thank you. Um, we're here today on the resolution concerning the request for Mr. Boyd's exemption application on the personal care home moratorium that was passed back in March, I believe. Just some facts to keep in mind for your vote. Mr. Boyd has had his application pending with the county for about four and a half months since January thirtieth. He's met all the requirements for personal care home under county requirements, zoning laws, and state regulations. There's no conditional use permit required for him to have a personal care home in his home under the current reg, or ordinances. He was, when he applied, Mr. Boyd was given a list of requirements, and he's complied with all of them. He has strictly adhered to all codes, ordinances, and state requirements, and has moved forward in his plans as in anybody planning on applying for a personal care home would do. He has met the fire department standards, he has met building department requirements, he has spent over thirty-four thousand dollars getting his home ready for, to comply with regulations as well as just to make it a comfortable and safe environment for the residents that he plans on offering services to. He has been granted his state license by the state as of May fifteenth. On that same day, May fifteenth, is when he actually applied before you all for his exemption to this moratorium so that his application can move forward and be considered by the county. In his request, he's, he has explained the non-impact of his personal care home. He has laid out his expenditures, including all copies of receipts. He, and he's explained all of his compliance that he is, for his application. The request also put the county on notice that he has a de facto vesting of his rights to this county permit for his personal care home. He has made a substantial change in his position by making expenditures in reliance on the probability of the issuance of this permit based on the existing zoning ordinances and assurances of the zoning officials at the time. He's been in total compliance, known to him by the state and county. He's entitled to this permit, notwithstanding any moratorium or change in the zoning ordinance. And apparently, evidently, the county has agreed. They had the opportunity to request any further information or reports, paperwork. They have not during this thirty-day period. He has come fully coa, he has fully cooperated with the county for any requests, giving them all information they needed. The granting of these requests and exemption for their license will in no way negatively impact the health, safety, morals, and aesthetics or general welfare, welfare of the community. It will not promote street congestion, crime, or danger to any citizen, not negatively affect Cottonfield subdivision, which is where his home is located, and his personal care home will not violate any subdivision covenants as they are set in place today. So we're asking you to approve this resolution. There's absolutely no reason that this exemption should not be granted and the permit ultimately granted by the county. So, if there are any questions, be happy to.
County, Ms. County Attorney, the action of this board today is exactly what direction for us?
What you will be doing today is either approving the exemption request such that the license that was pending at the time of the issuance of the moratorium can be processed. Not that it will be automatically granted, but that it will be processed according to our county codes and ordinances. Or you will deny the exemption request, at which time, that issuance of the license will be stayed until the final zoning changes are brought to you within the next forty-five to sixty days.
Okay. Any, any questions from any board members? Mr. Holmes?
It supersede the covenants, does it?
Well, any action by the board, I mean, covenants issues are, can only be enforced by landowners. So, you know, that's something for the landowners to bring any kind of legal action towards them, you know.
Because if it's in a, if it's in a subdivision and there's a covenant in place, why do we need to vote on it? Because the covenants will supersede, correct?
Well, I mean, we don't know why we're here exactly.
It's up to the homeowners to enforce their covenants. It's up to the Boyd to comply with each and every requirement that you people, that the county and the state have put in place, and they have done so. So, yes, sir, you're correct, the. So, yes, sir, you're correct, it's up to the, it is not up to the board or the county or the state to enforce any covenants existing.
Any other questions from any board member?
Mr. Vice Chairman, just as in, you had a previous resolution this morning regarding the fences where there was a provision that that code or change would not conflict or supersede any existing covenant. So, the board, you don't exist in a vacuum, and so you can consider all of these things. I think that was one of the reasons that precipitated the imposition of the moratorium was to look at, take a comprehensive look at the ordinance to make a determination as to whether those things should be a part of the consideration process. But we don't currently enforce private covenants, that's not what the county does. But that doesn't mean that that's something that might not be a factor or a condition or something to be thought about as the new ordinance comes into play. Let me also say that it's important to note that in this application process, what I have looked at, the Boyd's attempt, they have applied to be the owner, they're the property owners, but they also want to run the care home, which will mean there will be a home occupation personal care home. And under our existing ordinance, they will only be allowed three residents if that were the case, not four. So even if the license went forward, a home occupation personal care home under our county ordinance only allows three residents. And that supersedes whatever the license requirements are or the license that was issued by the state, that residential care number will have to give way to our zoning ordinance.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to deny.
This is not a public hearing. We've already had that, we're hearing the ordinance.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor to deny the request, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under parks and recs, we have a resolution requesting approval of a facilities agreement, rental agreement with Henry County Rodeo Association. Mr. Tim Colley is the presenter. Good afternoon, Mr. Colley.
Good afternoon, good afternoon. Yes, this is a resolution to allow the Henry County Rodeo Association to do the Fourth of July festival at Nash Farm. They have completed the, their fireworks permit, they do have a contract with Atlanta Power Technic, and we do have a copy of their insurance together between the Atlanta Power Technic and the rodeo association, they have the combined $4 million of insurance, and this will be for July 4th.
Have you had a chance to review the insurance certificate and the contract?
I did review the insurance certificate, and my comments were based upon information I received from the insurance risk person, Jim Wellman, here in the county, and I relate those to the county manager.
Okay. Any comments, any board members?
I believe this is from B. Neil from the other Henry County, is that correct?
It is. Strike that from the record, please.[1203.23][1203.23](laughter) At this time, there's a-
In Texas, we succeed. It is. Mr. Chairman.
There's a resolution before you to approve a rental agreement with the rodeo association. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
We have one more request. We were asked while we were here, Mr. Davis is here, he's an independent businessman, to save him a trip, he also has a facility, we have a facility agreement with Henry County, and if it's appropriate to bring it at this time for the rodeo in September.
I'll be honest with you, Tim, that has not been reviewed and advertised by the county attorney, so I'm going to have to freeze on that one. Nothing personal, it's just, there's a process, and I don't want to jump out of line there.
No problem.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Davis? I've got a minute.
I'm sorry.
No, I just think we'd be a little somewhat remiss if we didn't recognize Sam Davis because so many people don't know who Sam Davis is, and the fact that he may be with the rodeo association. But Sam has tried to provide for many, many years here in Henry County some recreation that was not part of a recreation program. Sam has followed the rodeo association, and he's headed it several, as many different locations about it as he could put it, can't be making any money from it, but he has continued to stay in and try to provide some sort of, as I said, recreation, other than normal recreation for the people of this county. Concerts at the Jason Harper event center. He has tried his best to promote many things in this county, and I just think that people need to know who we're talking about and put a face with a name as to who has tried to provide this when it wasn't provided any other way. So Sam, I just wanted to say for myself, thank you over the years for what you've done to try to bring, I will quote, quality of life and level. Now, quality of life, you know, that's a good coin phrase that everybody has to zero in on, but to offer us something that we didn't have. Thank you.
Sam, one other comment, too. I think you've heard the same rattles I had over the years about the Jason T. Harper Arena, and that actually was built prior to me taking office, and if I fought hard to not put concrete down, I thought, this is crazy, because we have a concrete floor that we come back in and put dirt on top of. So that wasn't, Rainey didn't approve that, Rainey wasn't involved in that process. Maybe the next one we build will have a concrete floor.
Well, Nash Farm's turned out real good for that, too.
And there is no concrete floor out there.
That's right.
Thank you for your job, I appreciate everything you do, really do. Thank you. Okay, under social services, we have a resolution, the approval and application for Department of Health and Human Services Administration for Children and Family Grant. Ms. Kelly Bush will be the presenter. Good morning, good afternoon, Kelly.
Good afternoon. This is a resolution for y'all to approve, for us to apply for this grant. It is to increase the well-being of and to improve the permanency outcomes for children affected by substance abuse, and it's a really big grant. It's at a minimum $500 a year for five years, and it's a collaborative grant, which more and more of them are becoming. Instead of just us applying, we have to get community partners. And when we sat down to see if there was a need and an interest at the table, the first meeting, we had Department of Family Children's Services, Friends House, Haven's House, Children's Advocate. We were emailing with the Board of Education, Jessica Stormer wasn't able to make the meeting, but they are wanting to partner with us in this through communities and schools. And we're, as all of these grants, the solicitation drops and the applications do like five to six weeks later, and we've determined that there's about 150 hours worth of work to go into writing this grant. And there is a cash match to it, which is why we're here. Connecting Henry would be the primary applicant because they're better set to work with all of the community partners. The match would be $88,235 in each of the first two years, $125,000 in the third and the fourth year, and $167,000 in the fifth year. But I can find that, it says cash, but cash can be professional services, grantees, subrecipient staff, services, equipment, space. I can find it without us having to come up with any money, with just things that we already do.
Kelly, $88,000, but it says 15%, which would be $75,000. Is there a number missing or something?
The way that these are, they take the full budget, so the entire budget would have to be $588,000.
Okay.
Which-
Okay.
So then they would provide $500,000, and our portion would be $88,000.
Okay, thank you.
And we can easily do the $88,000.
Where's the $88,000 coming from?
It would come from existing salaries, portions of salaries, like, we could take a portion of Darrell's salary and apply it towards it, we could take a portion of some of the grant, sub-grantee salaries and apply it towards it. And we're going to have to need, we're going to need a location to house the project, so we're hoping to be able to apply lease towards it.
Where would it be located?
We are, we're trying. I mean, we just, that was the thing, this is just to apply for the grant. We haven't, we're still trying to put it all together and come up with all the logistics. We have the, we have the support and the interest, but we just don't have the time to map it all out before we bring it to you. We-
And there's always the opportunity that if you receive the award and you can't work everything out, then you just don't accept the grant.
Correct. Or if I can't work everything out, we don't apply. I mean, at the end, but I feel confident that I can. Any other questions or comments pertaining to this? Okay, if not, you have a resolution before you to approve the application, applying for the application for the grant, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right, we don't have any public comment.
Madam Chair, there was one lady that signed up, Ms. Murphy, but she has left the room.
She has left, okay. Well, we'll bypass that. Mr. County Manager, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings and events, tomorrow's, we have no items for the agenda, is that correct? So I need a motion to cancel tomorrow night's meeting.
Motion to cancel.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. So the upcoming meetings at this time, Monday, July the 2nd, and Tuesday, July 3rd, 9:00 a.m., these are both regular board meetings. Wednesday, July 4th, all county offices will be closed in observance of the Independence Day holiday. Ms. County Attorney, do we have anything for executive session?
We have one small splosh item. I knew you all would look like that. I just-
Drum roll, I know.[1694.13][1694.13](laughter)
I just texted Rocky to see if we had to have this answer for him today, and he texted me back, yes.
Okay.
But I promise you, it will be less than 15 minutes.
All right, I want everybody to set, I want everybody to set their timers.
Madam Chair, can you let the record reflect that in room, 15 minutes?
Commissioner Stamey has already cautioned me to stop saying this is going to be a quick meeting because I jinx it every time. With that being said, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation personnel and land acquisition matters.
So move, Madam Chair.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamey, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? I need a motion to reconvene into public session. A motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. We stand adjourned.